Commissioners, this is Troy, your host. We are live and recording.
Welcome, everybody, to this afternoon, Tuesday, April 26th, land use and public hearing. If you'll all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ingalls, do we have certification of the agenda?
We do, Mr. Chair. We have, let's see, item 3A required published, posted, and mailed notice. That was accomplished March 17th, March 16th, and March 11th, respectively. Item 3B did not require any specialized notice. Item 3C was continued from March 22nd and April 12th until today. And finally, item 3D required published notice, which was accomplished April 21st, 2022. With that, you have proper notice and jurisdiction on all four items.
Thank you, Mr. Ingalls. Do we have any Commissioner disclosures for items on this agenda?
I have none, thank you.
No, sir.
And I have none either. Moving to item two, we have no land use meetings today, so we'll move to item three, our public hearing agenda items. The first is item 3A Sterling Ranch Plan Development, Fifth Amendment Project File, ZR 2021-033. Brett Thomas for Community Development.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. The application ZR 2021-033 Sterling Ranch Plan Development, Fifth Amendment. The applicant has requested a continuance of the hearing on this application to May 24th, 2022, at 2:30 p.m. The Planning Commission has scheduled, item, the Planning Commission hearing was scheduled or continued to May 2nd, 2022.
Thank you. Any questions for Brett? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to, well, actually, before we bring it back to the board for motion, let me ask if there's any citizen comment on this item 3A. Is there any citizen comment in the room? Seeing none, is there any citizen comment online?
Thank you, Commissioner. No online comment.
Okay, with that, I will close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or motion.
If it pleases the board, I'd like to make a motion to continue Sterling Ranch Plan Development, Fifth Amendment, Project File, ZR 2021-033, to May 24th, 2022, at 2:30 p.m.
Second.
I have a first and second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. With that, we'll move to item 3B, which is Subdivision Improvements Agreement, Intergovernmental Agreement between the Bactees at Castle Pines Village LLC, whose address is 975 North Lincoln Street, Unit 204, Denver, Colorado 80203, and the Castle Pines Metropolitan District, whose address is 5880 Country Club Drive, Casa Rock, Colorado 80108, and the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners, Project File DV 2021-360. Al Peterson, presenting for Engineering, unless that's Brett. Again, hey Brett.
It is Brett again. Items 3B and 3C will be presented concurrently, or presented as one. The minor development application is Castle Pines Village filing 44A, First Amendment, project number SB 2021-053. Sorry. As part of this presentation, staff will also provide information on the Subdivision Improvements Agreement, Intergovernmental Agreement, SIA IGA, associated with this application. Matt Buster, Matt Buster of Manhard Consulting is here as the applicant. The applicant has requested approval of a minor development plot to subdivide a 14.31 acre parcel into 10 single-family residential lots, one super block lot, and two tracks. Single-family lots range in size from .33 acres to .6 acres. The intent of the minor development process is to provide a streamlined review process for the creation of 10 or fewer single-family residential lots. Minor development process begins with submission of an application. Following comments by staff, the request is forwarded to referral agencies. At the beginning of the referral period, courtesy notifications of an application in process are sent to abiding landowners. Staff further analyzes the request, and the applicant is provided the opportunity to address any issues identified through the referral period. Public notice is provided, and the request is heard by the Planning Commission prior to consideration by the Board of County Commissioners. During the process, staff receive public comments from residents northeast of the site that were opposed to an extension of Oxford Peak Lane through the site. Additional neighbor opposition letters have been submitted since the Planning Commission hearing. As such, all letters have been provided to the Board of County Commissioners that have been received. The Planning Commission considered the applicant's request at a public hearing on March 7th. Commissioners had questions regarding emergency vehicle access, roadway design alternatives, and drainage. One member of the public spoke in response to the application, noting concern with cut-through traffic with the proposed Oxford Peak Lane connection. The applicant discussed the difficulties with alternative designs for Oxford Peak Lane and provided clarification on the drainage tract. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the minor development final plot, subject to six conditions proposed by staff by a vote of six to two. The site, outlined in red, is located within the northeast corner of the Castle Pines Village Plan Development, west of Happy Canyon Road. As seen on this aerial, the site is adjacent to single-family development to the northeast and west. The land to the south includes filings 41 and 44A, which were approved for single-family residential by the Board in 2020 and 2021, respectively. The Castle Pines Plan Development was approved in 1984 for approximately 2,800 lots, of which approximately 1,900 lots are platted. In December 2020, Board of County Commissioners approved Castle Pines Village filing 14A, First Amendment, for two super block lots and one tract. One of the super block lots, Lot 623B, is part of this minor development request. In January 2021, the Board approved Castle Pines filing 44A for nine residential lots, one super block lot, and one tract. The super block lot, Lot 10, makes up the remainder of this minor development request. Before you, is the minor development plot, including 10 detached single-family residential lots, one super block lot, and two tracks. Site access for lots 1 through 10 is proposed from Oxford Peak Lane, which is proposed to be extended from its terminus to Country Club Drive to the west. General Note 16 on the plat exhibit requires the super block lot, which is Lot 623B1, obtain additional subdivision approvals prior to construction of any occupiable structures on the lot. The super block lot is included with this plat to avoid creating a remnant parcel in violation of the subdivision resolution. This photo looks southwest into the site from the terminus of Oxford Peak Lane. This view looks east through the site from Country Club Drive. The approval standards for minor development requests are set forth in Section 603 of the subdivision resolution and are listed on this slide. Staff's assessment of the approval standards are discussed in detail within pages 10 through 12 of the staff report. All required engineering plans, studies, and reports have been reviewed and accepted by Engineering. Staff has evaluated the minor development in accordance with Article 6 of the subdivision resolution. Required improvements are identified and secured through the SIA IGA. Should the Board find that the approval standards for the minor development final plat are met, the following proposed conditions should be considered for inclusion in its motion. Condition number one, prior to approval of the minor development final plat, the associated SIA IGA for the subdivision shall be approved by the Board. Condition number two, prior to recordation of the minor development final plat, the Castle Pines Metropolitan District sanitary easement shall be recorded by separate instrument and noted on the plat exhibit. Condition number three, prior to recordation of the minor development final plat, technical corrections to the plat exhibit shall be made to the satisfaction of Douglas County. Condition number four, prior to issuance of the first building permit within Castle Pines filing 44A, First Amendment, the applicant shall implement the recommendations of the Wildland Fire Mitigation Plan to the specifications of the Douglas County Wildfire Mitigation Specialist. Condition number five, during construction activity within the development, the applicant and its successors and assigns shall take all reasonable care to watch for historic resources, paleontological resources, and other cultural history resources, and shall immediately notify Douglas County in the event of such discovery. Condition number six, during construction activity within the development, the applicant and its successors and assigns shall conduct a burrowing house study if any earth moving will take place between March 15 and October 31. And condition number seven, all commitments and promises made by the applicant or the applicant's representative during the public hearing and/or agreed to in writing and included in the public record have been relied upon by the Board of County Commissioners in approving the application. Therefore, such approval is conditioned upon the applicant's full satisfaction of all such commitments and promises. Section 604.08 of the subdivision resolution sets forth the parameters for the Board's determination on minor development requests, as noted on this slide. The SIA IGA that accompanies the minor development final plat is a three-party agreement between the county, the Bactees at Castle Pines Village LLC, and the Castle Pines Metropolitan District. The purpose of the SIA IGA for Castle Pines Village filing 44A, First Amendment, is to provide for the completion of roadways, storm drainage infrastructure, water and sanitary infrastructure, and excavation and grading improvements. Al Peterson with Engineering is available if you have specific questions regarding the agreement. This concludes the presentation on the final plat for Castle Pines Village filing 44A, First Amendment, and the SIA IGA. Two motions are necessary from the Board. The first, a motion would be made for the SIA IGA, followed by a second motion on the minor development final plat. Planning and engineering staff are available to take questions at this time. There are also representatives from South Metro Fire in attendance to answer any questions. And in addition, Matt Buster, the applicant representative, has a presentation to make.
Great, thank you, Brett. Any questions for Brett or staff? Okay, and I don't have any questions right now. I'll reserve those following the applicant's presentation. Welcome. If you want to state your name and address for the record?
My name is Matt. My name is Matt Buster, address 90, I'm sorry, 7600 East Orchard Road, Greenwood Village, Colorado. I'm representing, I'm with Manhard Consulting, representing the applicant, Bactees at Castle Pines LLC. After I'm done with my presentation, we also have other members of our team available for any questions. Those members include Jack Vickers, the overall developer for Castle Pines Village, Len Goldberg, the owner of Bactees LLC, and also Chris McGannahan with LSC, our traffic engineer. So a little bit of this will be, might be too short. A little bit of this will be redundant with Brett's presentation, but essentially, we have proposed 10 lots, two tracks, and one super block lot, Lot 623B1, which will not be developed at this time. The 10 lots range in size, as Brett mentioned, from 0.33 acres on the minimum size to 0.6 acres, the maximum size, the average lot size being .41 acres per lot. The open, or the super block lot, Lot 623B1, shown here in blue, 1.66 acres. Our ideas for the future of that lot will likely include two single-family homes, but that will be dealt with at a later date with a separate land use application. And open space tracks, there are two, Track A, which also includes a regional detention facility designed in accordance with Douglas County and Mile High Flood Control District standards. And Track B is essentially just a native open space land area. The two tracks total 6.15 acres of the total property area. And the roadway is the last piece of the puzzle, which consists of 1.6 acres. So we've gone through several approval processes to date with this project. We've obtained approved construction drawings for the infrastructure underlying Oxford Peak Lane, as well as the regional detention facility. Castle Pines Metropolitan District has signed and approved our roadway construction plans, storm sewer construction plans, water, sanitary sewer, Phase 3 drainage report, and as well as they have signed the intergovernmental agreement before you today for your consideration. Douglas County Engineering essentially has approved similar documents, roadway and storm plans, Phase 3 drainage report, grading erosion sediment control plans, and have reviewed for your consideration the intergovernmental agreement. We've also had South Metro Fire review our roadway and water system plans, and they too have given their approval. And the Castle Pines Design Review Committee has reviewed the subdivision plat for its conformance with land use requirements for the Castle Pines Design Review criteria. So just giving a little overall summary of the location of the project, see if I can make the laser pointer work here. The property area is in this zone here. It's located in the northern and eastern portion of the village. You'll hear a lot of conversation about Gate 5 tonight. Gate 5 is the eastern edge of Castle Pines Village. La Gay Road, which has since been renamed to Chase Road, comes into Gate 5 and provides access to I-25 from the north. Gates 1 and 2 are to the south of the project and provide southerly access off of Happy Canyon Road. The primary roadway network consists of Country Club Drive, which runs from Gate 1 around the property to the west, connects with La Gay Road, Chase Road, Gate 5, and then becomes Castle Pines Parkway as it travels through the north of the village. That is the primary regional roadway system. And then we have internal local streets, such as Oxford Peak Lane, that we will talk about here in a little bit. Just a zoomed-in version to give you a better visual. The property is shown in red, highlighted in red here. Oxford Peak Lane essentially runs north to the Gate 5 location on Chase Road. So just setting a backbone for the overall master plan, this document was approved in 1985 and serves as the basis for the Castle Pines Plan Development, the governing document for all of Castle Pines Village. This document remains largely unchanged, actually entirely unchanged in the area that we're focused on today. North, to avoid confusion, is to your left. In order to get this document to fit on the slide, I have to do a little rotation. But Oxford Peak Lane on this exhibit was essentially this road that you see here. Country Club Drive that I mentioned is this road through here. So at the time of this document, and through the 20th Amendment, which is where we currently sit today, that roadway alignment has always remained as shown on this original exhibit. So there'll be a lot of conversation about traffic, and I wanted to kind of give an introduction to the background traffic, the site traffic, and also we'll let Chris McGannahan talk in more detail about the traffic here a little later after the Q&amp;A session concludes. But essentially, the traffic created by this development, the 10 homes proposed, essentially consists of 94 average daily trips, average weekday trips. And that traffic is distributed both in the northerly and southerly directions from our project. During the max hour, or the AM/PM peak hour, not max hour, we essentially have two trips in in the AM, five trips out. In the PM, we have six trips in and three trips out. So those trips will be distributed both, again, in the north and south directions, as further shown in the next slide after this one. But highlighting the 10 lots, these are the existing 10 lots that will take access from Oxford Peak Lane. The existing lots to the north of the project include 68 homes, and essentially, using the same 9.4 trips per home, results in essentially the 10 lots adding 7.4% of traffic to Oxford Peak Lane, as it exists today. Assuming all homes highlighted here, the 68 existing and the 10 proposed use Oxford Peak Lane either in a northbound or southbound fashion. So going back in time, you know, we have been trying to work with the concerns of the community, and primarily the concerns of those residents that live directly north on Oxford Peak Lane to limit traffic on Oxford Peak Lane. This started essentially about two years ago with the filing 41 project, which is highlighted in gray here. At that time, we agreed to install an emergency vehicle access gate at the end of Lindsay Peak Lane. And with the installation of that emergency vehicle gate, all of this traffic associated with filing 41 was not allowed to travel on Oxford Peak Lane, and it relies solely upon Country Club Drive, which again is the road to the south here, for its primary points of access. And that, we feel, was, you know, a great benefit to Oxford Peak Lane in removing that traffic from Oxford Peak. Then the next filing that occurred chronologically in time was the filing 44A project. That project was before you about a year ago. And that project added an additional nine homes of traffic, highlighted in gray. And again, those nine homes were primarily restricted access. There were two lots there that were, do have the ability to take access from Lindsay Peak Lane on the north side of that gate in this zone here. But all other homes in that project also must use Golden Bear Lane, which is the drive to the southeast to Country Club. And now we're talking about some additional trips that will use Oxford Peak Lane. This exhibit here was prepared by LSC, showing those new trips and the new movements for those trips associated with this project. So the critical area of focus is the north end using Oxford Peak Lane for northbound movement to Gate 5. During the AM/PM peak hours, essentially four additional trips during that peak hour are proposed to be added to the road. Depending upon AM or PM, in the case of AM, three cars will be leaving, one will be coming in during that one-hour period, and the inverse is true during the PM peak. And as I mentioned, you know, there's also proposed access on Country Club Drive at the south end. And here you see that essentially during those same AM/PM peak hours, approximately three cars will be leaving in the AM, and zero are proposed to return in the AM. And then looking at Country Club Drive further downhill from the proposed access point, essentially, the AM/PM peaks result in another two trips being added to Country Club Drive during the AM/PM peak hours. So this exhibit here essentially combines what we've just gone through, filing 41, filing 44A, and filing 44A, First Amendment, the subject property, to give you a general feel for the total traffic that will be added to Oxford Peak Lane. So the representative numbers on Oxford Peak Lane to the north show that there's essentially seven new trips per hour, or per AM/PM peak period, two in five, two leaving, five returning, for a total of seven trips in that peak hour period. And an average daily traffic of 56 cars will use that road in a given day. Those numbers, keep in mind, are fairly low, very low, quite honestly, being that one house generates nine trips a day. We're only proposing a total of 56 additional trips. So you'll hear some concerns where the residents to the north are concerned that there will be substantial cut-through traffic using Oxford Peak Lane. And first, let's take a step back and look at the classification of these roads. I do have a flyer I'd like to hand out to you to allow you to see the various classifications.
Commissioners, just for the record, real quick, I handed out three exhibits. Let me identify those, and then I've just been handed what I will label Exhibit 4. Exhibit 1 is a presentation that is going to present, be presented by the Homes Association. Exhibit 2 is a series of emails and communications that were sent in after the record was completed and put online. And then 3, which is bound, is titled Oxford Peak Residents Opposed to Road Extension. Those were the first three exhibits, and I'm now labeling Exhibit 4.
So the roadway classifications that we are considering here, the Castle Pines Metropolitan District has adopted standards for the private roads within Castle Pines Village. And those consist of four primary roadway classifications. One is a major collector, one is a collector, one is a local one, and another is a local two. And I, as the roadway design engineer, not only associated with this project, but also with the filing 27A project, have laid out these roads in the following fashion. The red line here represents Country Club Drive. It is a collector road per these categories presented before you. Essentially, the design speed, the way this roadway was designed, was to handle speeds of 30 miles an hour. The blue road, which was designed both in filing 27A by me, as well as in the proposed project by me, is a local one classification. And that is designed in accordance with the design speed of 20 miles an hour. So you'll see, just by looking at this graphic, that the horizontal curvature leads itself to much tighter curves and smaller radiuses in the blue alignment, which is the local classification. The red alignment, contrarily, has much larger radiuses, allowing for a greater travel speed. Furthermore, the lane widths on the red line are designed for 24 feet of pavement, which lane widths are two lanes, 12 foot each. So looking at the speed of travel, it's a known fact that wider laneage encourages and allows for higher speed rates. The blue road, contrarily, is designed with two 10-foot lanes for a total of 20 foot of asphalt travel lane section. Furthermore, you'll notice the distances traveled. And I kind of have two destination routes shown on this exhibit. One is addressing the cut-through comments received on if the blue lane is to be used as a cut-through lane. So the blue line is 4,300 linear feet in travel length. The red line is 42, 45 linear feet. More or less the same distance, but granted, the blue line is slightly longer and would, you know, by distance alone, would be a longer travel lane. In addition to the distance, the other things we need to consider are the design speed, i.e. the posted speed, as well as the community and the neighborhood environment around that road as compared to the environment on Country Club Drive, which by nature is a much broader and less congested street. So our belief with this exhibit, and will be vetted fully by our professional traffic engineer, is that the chances of cut-through traffic using the blue road are very minimal, almost nonexistent. There will be those cases where, you know, someone may make a wrong choice and use that road on occasion, but we do not see it being a common, a common theme. Furthermore, the other generator of traffic in this area of the village is the Country Club at Castle Pines Golf Course. And a lot of people will use Gate 5 that are not in the village to get to the Country Club. And looking at that travel distance, leaving through Gate 5 and traveling to the Country Club using the red Country Club Drive collector alignment, that distance is essentially 1,000 feet shorter than if the blue line, Oxford Peak Lane, were to be used as an alternative. The other thing before we leave this slide that I'd like to just have you look at the big picture is the primary users of Oxford Peak Lane are really the community members that live on Oxford Peak Lane. There is no real destinational traffic surrounding this portion of the village. And you can see there's a large divider between the southern portion of the village and the northern northern portion of the village, and that's due to topographic constraints and steep topography. But it's almost as if this natural terrain element separates the homes below the cliffs from the homes that are above the cliffs. So you will hear a lot of concerns about Oxford Peak Lane becoming a collector and a cut-through for the village, but in fact, we have to ask ourselves, where are these people truly going? We really are only talking about the residents that live north of the Green Belt and the subject property and those residents that currently reside upon Oxford Peak Lane as being the true users of this road. Also, just to document the history a little further, I've discussed the overall plan development and the master plan. But here are some earlier documents that have been approved through Douglas County through, through periods of time. This document is the preliminary plan for the subject property filing 27 to our north. And you'll note on this document that Oxford Peak Lane and Lindsay Peak Lane were contemplated as through roads, as justified by this temporary cul-de-sac denotation on this note, as well as the temporary barricade on this note. And with the future development parcels, of which were now, are before you, being identified as future access from this road. Also is the final plat for filing 27A. This document was recorded in January of 2002, 20, 20 years and a little bit ago. And this document, several agreements were worked out in place prior to this document, but they all were in regards to the eastern access and the access coming to Gate 5 from I-25. But just so that it's clear, in this final plat, which the majority of the residents you will hear from tonight reside and purchase their homes within, did clearly show that Le Gay Road was a proposed road at this time, was, was a known road to connect to Gate 5 and Le Gay Road, which happens to be outside the limits of the plat. But these, these were all put in place prior to this plat being recorded. This is on a match line, but there's the western limits of Le Gay Road connecting to Country Club Drive here and Oxford Peak Lane traveling to the south. As we scroll through the pages, again, to the end of the road via this plat with the same dead-end condition that I referenced in the previous preliminary plan document. If this were to have been a cul-de-sac, what you, what you see here is a cul-de-sac design, and this would have been a cul-de-sac, but that was never the proposed intent throughout So just addressing some of our concern, or some of our mitigations a little further to address the concerns of the community and primarily truly the residents that live immediately north of here, we agreed to construct a back-to-back cul-de-sac. And Jack Bickers, who will speak later, the overall developer, had to set aside land that was otherwise planned to be sold as lot area for the construction of this facility, which includes the emergency vehicle access gate between the two cul-de-sacs to limit the access that I've discussed previously on the filing 41 project. So we, we feel that, that, that addition, additional infrastructure, you know, really addressed the primary concern and the majority of the traffic from limiting that ability to use Lindsay Peak Lane to Oxford Peak Lane. Here's a detail of the construction plan that was approved for the proposed gate. And again, the cul-de-sacs are repeated in the upper left corner. So what we have undertaken in the last four to five months to try to, try to further listen to the community and work with the community's concerns was truly looking at a cul-de-sac where we would propose what you see before us. This cul-de-sac essentially was presented to South Metro Fire, who there are representatives here tonight to speak on, but they expressed concerns on this being too long. The Castle Pines Metropolitan District roadway standards that you have before you at the bottom of the page, you'll note the maximum allowed cul-de-sac is 1,200 feet. We knew at the time that this was pushing the limits and exceeding the 1,200 feet. So we asked, you know, both Douglas County Engineering and South Metro Fire to consider a variance to allow the additional 300 feet to the cul-de-sac. However, you know, after hearing the concerns of South Metro Fire and, you know, further going up the flagpole at the fire department, we officially submitted a variance request, even after being told that this was not acceptable from a staff level. We went up to the chief's office and essentially, here's a copy of the letter, I think it's also part of your file record, where we made our official request for reconsideration of the additional length. And again, the fire department, for, for valid reasons, denied this request and essentially caused us to abort that option. There's a copy of the letter from South Metro Fire. So then we gave it one last shot, and this process now has been going on for five, six months in an attempt to come up with a different solution. The last alternative, essentially, this is focused at the dead end that exists today at Oxford Peak Lane, this is Lindsay Peak Lane here, was to try to develop a hammerhead whereby Oxford Peak, in its existing condition with dead end into a hammerhead, that's a terminology for a turnaround. And contrarily, the proposed Oxford Peak Lane would then turn into Lindsay Peak Lane rather than Oxford Peak Lane. We never liked this alternative for several of the problems it has, one being there are several utilities in this area that will need to be relocated, and will be quite costly to relocate. You can see the underlying facilities. In addition, and the most costly of all is the fact that this is impacting two current lot owners to the south. This is Lot 8, this is Lot 9 of filing 44, 44A. And it would require essentially substantial land area to be acquired from those owners. So this was never a preferred alternative, but we tried to give it one last ditch go to see if this might be something that was acceptable to South Metro Fire. And it was this document that kind of opened our eyes to the larger issues at hand. And what South Metro Fire clearly expressed is, and they admitted to learning quite a bit with the research and observations of what had happened in the Boulder fires recently, but they really are insistent upon a secondary access route to Country Club Drive. And they view Oxford Peak Lane as that secondary route. So, you know, with the, with the issues on wildfire in the area, with the ever-increasing risks we're seeing, you know, it became even more important that Oxford Peak Lane be a secondary egress for the community in the event of a wildfire. And granted, we've listened to, you know, a very close neighborhood group, but in looking at the overall master plan and looking for the greater good of the community, of which I've been working in for more than 30 years, we really have to take a stand back and look at the value of having this secondary access. So it was then that, you know, we kind of changed our course and said, you know, what we've heard from the fire department makes a lot of sense. This really should be a through road. And furthermore, what we learned in that meeting was when you have a habit-forming condition, such as, as an example, if this were never connected, in the event of an emergency, the chances of people using that road as a egress movement would likely not even click in their mind because they've trained their brain to not use this road because they know it doesn't go through. So for that reason, we believe there is substantial merit in allowing this road to function as a through road. We've documented that there are very minor traffic concerns, and we believe that the solutions, if there are truly problems, can be mitigated if, if in fact, what the community feels will happen, does happen. We do not believe that. We disagree with the theory that this will become a major road. But in the event, the community is right, and it does become additional traffic from that represented, becomes added, we see there being additional mitigation measures that could be added along the corridor. And we've worked with Castle Pines Metro District to determine these improvements, and we're more than happy, if and when the time comes, to help implement with the Metro District these improvements along the corridor. So the first item includes reducing the speed limit. We would post a 20 mile an hour speed limit throughout the corridor as shown here, clearly signaling the fact that, while I mentioned the design speed is 20, we would also clearly indicate that the speed limit is 20. Furthermore, with the addition of stop signs, that is further, further going to add to the travel times, we're looking at, we've considered one additional three-way stop at the Lindsay Peak/Oxford Peak intersection, and that will also add substantial travel time to using this road. Thirdly, our speed bumps or speed tables with, looking at two potential locations in those sections that would lead themselves to higher speed, which are the straight sections within the curves, between the curves. Fourth would be adding what might be a not true sign, but could be a large deterrent at either end, both at Chase and Oxford and at Country Club and Oxford, stating that that's not a through road. And then lastly, we have agreed to install a monumentation sign to further change the aesthetic look of this road so that upon entry off of Country Club Drive, it would appear to be, as several, several of these exist throughout the community, more of a neighborhood sub-community versus a through road. So with those improvements, and if needed, we truly believe that there will be no concerns of cut-through traffic due to the increased travel time and hassle of using that street. So with that, I'll open up the questions, and again, I have other members of the team that will be happy to address further items.
Thank you very much for that. So any questions for the applicant regarding any of the presentation today?
I don't have any questions. I mean, that was, that was a, I was wondering where you were going for a while because it, you took a little ways, while to set up, but it came together for me, so no questions.
I don't have any questions either. I'd like to thank you for taking the time to carefully walk through all of this for us. Thank you.
Matt, thank you for that as well. In the packet, it seemed as though the most obvious concern and consideration was associated with traffic in that particular cul-de-sac, but it appears based on the referral comments that that just was not a workable solution with South Metro Fire, and therefore it seems fairly clear to me that that is a limited avenue for success. With that, let me open it up for any citizen comment with regard to this item. Is there any citizen comment on this item? Oh, it looks like we have a sign in. You know, and maybe before we do that, Matt, let's just, as a housekeeping item, is the applicant comfortable with all of the seven conditions as presented?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Matt. I'll go ahead and begin with our sign-in sheet, and the first individual that has signed up is Mark Larson from Happy Canyon Road.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm, I'm Mark Larson. I'm the general manager of the Castle Pines Homes Association. We're located at 688 West Happy Canyon Road. And today I represent the Homes Association Board of Directors, as well as the nearly 4,500 residents of Castle Pines, of the village of Castle Pines. Following my presentation, you will hear from residents of the current Oxford Peak Lane on the negative impacts that will be experienced if, as proposed, Oxford Peak Lane is connected from its current termination point to Country Club Drive. We, as a Homes Association, have heard their concerns and have raised opposition to the proposed connection. We raised our opposition to Douglas County in writing on four separate occasions dating back to August 2019. We also voiced our opposition to the developer, Castle Pine, or, I'm sorry, Douglas County Planning, to the South Metro Fire and Rescue, and to the Castle Pines Metropolitan District. The traffic impact analysis for the proposed extension of Oxford Peak Lane is based on a traffic impact analysis prepared 37 years ago in March of 1985, as well as a traffic memorandum that was completed last year. Neither of these documents reflect the current conditions in the area. The traffic impact analysis from 1985 shows Oxford Peak Lane as an internal loop road, like several other, and other loop roads in the village, without direct access to a village entrance. That's because in 1985, there was no entrance gate plan near Oxford Peak Lane. That happened later. Today, an entrance gate, Gate 5, is located on Chase Lane, as Matt pointed out, just beyond the intersection of Oxford Peak Lane, and just beyond the intersection with Oxford Peak Lane. As a result, the proposed extension will make Oxford Peak Lane a collector road connecting Country Club Drive with Chase Lane. That in turn will afford direct access to Gate 5 and the commercial activity in the city of Castle Pines, as well as a gateway to the Interstate 25. Because the 1985 traffic impact analysis never envisioned Oxford Peak Lane as a connector road, it was not designed or constructed to reach that amount, or to receive that amount of traffic. As required by Douglas County Engineering, LSC Transportation Consultants prepared a traffic memorandum dated October 20, 2021, to update the 1985 traffic impact analysis. While LSC followed the Douglas County Engineering requirements, its memorandum is based on assumptions and only tells part of the story. The memorandum evaluates only the additional trips that might be generated by the proposed 10 development, 10 home development, and not the cut-through traffic and routes that are sent that way by GPS. It ignores the much larger problem, the added traffic that would be generated by making Oxford Peak Lane a collector road with direct access to Gate 5 and beyond. The Castle Pines Homes Association believes, believes that the additional traffic a collector road could generate will result in irreparable harm to the residents of Oxford Peak Lane. The traffic calming measures proposed by the developer of speed tables, stop signs, and reduced speed limits are not adequate to address these potential issues. Compliance with stop signs and reduced speed limit will be very difficult to enforce, and the speed tables will unnecessarily affect the current residents of Oxford Peak Lane. The Homes Association has worked diligently with the developer and other agencies over the last two years to come up to a solution for this traffic issue that would address the concerns of the residents of the current Oxford Peak Lane, as well as the developer, South Metro Fire Rescue, the Castle Pines Metropolitan District, and Douglas County. During this process, we fully anticipated that a solution to this issue was obtainable, and we still believe that to be true. We do not oppose the development of the property and fully understand and support the rights of the developer and the life safety concerns of South Metro Fire Rescue, as well as the reasonable concerns of the residents of the current Oxford Peak Lane. Our goal is and has been to find a workable solution before it becomes a problem that cannot be fixed. The developer, to his credit, has evaluated several options which were not feasible for various reasons, but other viable options still exist and explore. As an example, the last, the last plan that Mr. Buster showed you As an example, the last, the last plan that Mr. Buster showed you, with the addition of an emergency gate there, would be something that would meet this goal. In recent discussions with Deputy Fire Marshal Rich Conroy from South Metro Fire Rescue, who's here this afternoon, he has indicated that South Metro Fire Rescue is willing to consider options utilizing an emergency gate to control through access on Oxford Peak Lane while allowing fire department accidents and resident emergency egress if an evacuation is needed. The use of an emergency gate in this manner is supported by the Homes Association, the Metropolitan District, South Metro Fire Rescue, and obviously, the residents in that area. We're confident that a workable solution that will meet the needs of all parties is possible, and we're committed to work with, working with all interested party to refine and finalize that solution. We respectfully request that the county commissioners continue the consideration of this project to allow the parties to explore traffic issues and to address the concerns of all parties. Thank you for your time and consideration in this critical manner. Again, as we said, our goal is not to prohibit the development of the property, but to find a workable solution that meets everyone's needs. If the current plan is based on, is adopted based on-
Mr. Larson, you're past your time, so we're gonna, thank you for your time.
We will create a safety issue that cannot be reversed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Larson.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Ray Haley. My wife and I have owned our home at 6203 Oxford Peak Lane since it was built in 2004. This is first and foremost a safety issue for the families that have made this neighborhood their home, and there are more than 30 young children on our street and many more in the Summit Neighborhood. For the past three years, our neighborhood and the Homes Association have been opposing proposals by developers to route traffic through our narrow street to Gate 5, which is just 200 feet from the northern end of Oxford Peak Lane. I'm going to talk about the maps on Slides 3 and 6. There are also some photos on 4 and 5 of the gate. Slide 3. In 2019, it was the 60 home development, now 67, that in the county ultimately made it a condition for the developer to install an emergency gate where Golden Bear Lane meets Lindsay Peak Lane. The emergency gate will give first responders an additional access point to our neighborhood and also to the new development, which, while requiring traffic between Gate 5 and the new development to use Country Club Drive, a collector road built to handle higher volume of traffic. Both our neighborhood and the Homes Association went on record in 2020 in connection with the predecessor filing 44 stating we would oppose an extension of our street to Country Club Drive, yet the applicant went ahead in 2021 with this plan. All of some 100 homes planned for the build-out of this area would have a shortcut to and from Gate 5 if our street is converted to a through street. His traffic memo does not consider the 2,600 vehicles now coming into and going out of Gate 5 every day, nor does it consider the 700 trips per day forecast for the 67 homes in the adjoining development that would have a new shorter route available to and from Gate 5. All of this done without any substantive traffic impact analysis to show what the impact on Oxford Peak Lane and its residents would be. There are some photos. And this one. I understand that the applicant is relying on the 85 traffic impact analysis for the village. As Mark Larson said, that analysis showed the entry point on the north side of the village to be about a mile away, and Oxford Peak Lane was purely a local road for houses on the street. That 85 analysis was made irrelevant when Gate 5 was moved to its current location after 2000, and Oxford Peak Lane was reconfigured to be the first left after entering the gate. Use of an outdated analysis clearly violates Douglas County guidelines, which require traffic to be, studies to be no more than two years old, especially when there is a substantial change to the original master plan. I request that this application is denied. If the filing is continued, please stipulate a condition that an emergency gate be installed at the end of our street to prevent a huge increase in traffic volume on our street. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haley. Do we have further citizen comment?
So you just press the button here. Hi, my name is Katie Leonard, and I'm a resident on Oxford Peak Lane. My husband and I moved with our three children eight years ago from Seattle, and the reason we moved to Douglas County is we had read about what a great county and schools and neighborhoods that we could live in. We were super excited that we could live in a safe community with a gate. It's beautiful. Look how natural it is. We have no gates, and you can see here, this is what we, this is our life. Every day, I walk up my streets, I sound like, you know, a professional woman, but I have a little Shih Tzu that's black and white, and he has to be walked every day. Several times a day, I walk up and down this street. You can see, there are no sidewalks. This is our street. This is a normal view of our street every day, whether there's snow outside, whether it's sunny outside. We have children that live, and children that come from other parts of our neighborhood come, these are children right here that are not even on Oxford Peak Lane. They come to play with the children on our street. I moved to Oxford Peak Lane and not a street off of Country Club Parkway because it backed up to Country Club Parkway, and I didn't want that sound, and I didn't want it to be unsafe for my children. So we specifically chose Oxford Peak Lane because it was a side street and it was away from a busy intersection and busy trucks coming up and down. I know that Douglas County values health and safety because we have been ranked in the top five healthiest counties in the country by U.S. World News. Not sure if anybody knew that, but we have. For the past several years, we have been in the top five counties in the country. You value safety and health and wellness of our children and our residents, and I sure hope that you put that over money from a developer and their, you know, reasons. This six or eight, nine cars that they think extra is going to be up and down our street is just false. That is not true. This little girl right here on the pink scooter, that is Harper. She is eight. The traffic study was done when I was eight. Look at our traffic now. Look how, this is, this is an average, these are residents' cars that are parked on our street. There is no room for working trucks, big dump trucks. That is a liability. That is a liability. It is not a matter of if someone and a child will be hit and killed, it is a matter of when, if this is a connector road. If this is a connector road, you will have big 18-wheelers, and you will see in a few minutes what the 18-wheelers look. This is normal traffic. Again, this is my house on the right. That is residents' trucks. That is not 18-wheelers, and that is what we do not want coming down our street and ruining our healthy way of life, which is why we moved here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leonard.
I respectfully ask for you to vote no.
Thank you, Ms. Leonard. Do we have further citizen comment?
Before I begin, I would ask to please submit petitions that were signed by our neighbors to the county attorney.
And if you want to just state your name and address for the record, and then you can distribute that to our county attorney, it's okay.
Hi, my name is Christine Frego. I live at 6210 Oxford Peak Lane.
Okay, thank you.
And this will be marked Exhibit 5.
Gosh, I have not used this. Oh, wait, 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 I don't know how to use this. There are 135 signatures on that petition, including people on Oxford Peak Lane and the six intersecting cul-de-sacs that feed onto our street and depend on it. Oxford Peak Lane, as we have said, is a local road designed and constructed to be local with traffic that begins and ends in our neighborhood. We are 20 feet wide with no sidewalks, with no shoulders, and only ditches for pedestrians to walk into when cars, trucks, and delivery vans come to our street. We have three blind hills, three blind curves, with six total site obstructions. There are no shoulders, no striped lanes. Cars, trucks, and delivery vans park directly on our road and often cause bottlenecks on a daily basis. Short driveways require residents to back their cars onto Oxford Peak Lane. This is the information I received from the Metropolitan District, which conflicts somewhat with what the developers provided to you. This shows three classifications, the residential collector Class 1, which is Country Club Drive in red. It's described as, and this is district language, Class 1 roads have the highest traffic volumes or the primary collectors providing connectivity of the various neighborhoods within the road network. These higher visibility roads were assigned this class. They are striped, 28 feet wide, 40% wider than Oxford Peak Lane, with paths to walk and bike paths as well. The local roads, Class 2, is Oxford Peak Lane in the yellow. Class 2 roads generally have medium traffic volumes or are cul-de-sacs with more than 12 homes that connect directly to them. There are 40 additional homes on the six cul-de-sacs that feed into Oxford Peak Lane and intersect us. We were not designed for through traffic. Our pedestrians walk in ditches, and these are aligned with the county classifications. The county classifications, in your technical criteria, indicate number one is safety, number two, efficiency of service for all users, number three, livability, and number four, economy. The primary concern is to minimize pedestrian and vehicular traffic conflicts. They say a picture's worth 1,000 words. We don't have 1,000 pictures for you, but we do have some to show our traffic on a daily basis. There is no quantitative data for these projections or estimates. It is qualitative. It is interpretive. It is interpretation-based. It is descriptive and based on language, not on actual data. This is our daily traffic. Google Maps, I'm sorry to say, shows an extension of Oxford Peak Lane, so on a daily basis, we are dealing with vans, trucks, and the construction trucks for these new developments coming down our street, unable to turn around at the end of our street.
And Ms. Frego, your time has expired. If you can wrap up your comments for us.
I will. If I may just show you the pictures, I think they speak for themselves. Navigating our street is already a problem, and that the bigger picture isn't just these 10 homes or nine homes, it's the potential of 10 homes at a time affecting a very dangerous situation on our street. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Frego. Do we have additional citizen comment? Welcome, sir. If you wanted to just state your name and address for the record.
Jay Frego, and I live on Oxford Peak Lane. Public safety, that's our number-one goal, objective, and policy for the village master plan. Our bylaws reiterate and promote that, and the HOA recognizes the threat to the safety of our residents on Oxford Peak Lane by stating the extension is dangerous and unnecessary, and that was stated in a letter December 2, 2021. The Minor Development Approval Standard 603.01 dictates that the application must conform with the goals, objectives, and policies of the village master plan. We contend that since the extension OPL represents a significant risk to public safety, that it fails to comply with that standard. Also, we haven't heard of any improvements in transportation for Oxford Peak Lane, and there's no current data to support any studies. The Metropolitan District classification, obviously, we are a Class 2 road, and everybody is walking on the streets, and that is a very dangerous and challenging situation when you understand the structure of OPL. It is a unique street indeed, and that 9.9 drop in grade in the middle of that street presents a tremendous problem for everybody that lives in and around OPL. So it's really, we have pedestrians on the street on a Class 2 road, or we can take a Class 1 road and keep the pedestrians separate. It's our choice. What do we want to do? And that goes back to public safety. Gate 5, if you go and take Gate 5 through Chase and Country Club Drive, and then you go through OPL, it's the same time and it's the same distance to get into that village. For emergency services, the fire department, Station 39, can come up Gate 1 and go through Country Club Drive and service most of that, of those homes in that area of which we are speaking. Station 36 would come down Legay Road, come through the two roundabouts and get into Gate 5, and then go straight on Chase Avenue through Country Club Drive, if that's the emergency route that's best, or they certainly, on an emergency basis, can take Oxford Peak Lane, but we certainly don't want that used as a through street. We went and knocked on every door on Oxford Peak Lane, as well as the seven connections. We've got 135 signatures for you guys to take a look at. This is a serious issue with the general public in this area, and we really want you to take a very serious look at those signatures and understand the emotion and the direction that these people want you to take, and that is not to make that extension. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frego. Do we have additional citizen comment?
Can I have the resident's presentation put back on screen? If you can control it from here. What button did I press? Okay. Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Andre Taucka. Last name is spelled P as in Peter, A-U-K-A. My wife and I have lived at 6213 Oxford Peak Lane for 17 years. We have six children there. I prepared a number of detailed slides, but there's a lot of overlaps, so I'm going to skip through some of this. You can see the comparison between Oxford Peak Lane and Country Club Drive in these two slides. There is no place for more traffic, there's no place for pass-through traffic to come through here. I absolutely agree with my neighbors that extending Oxford Peak Lane without an emergency gate will pose a significant risk to the residents. The application endangers public safety. It must conform with goals and objectives of the master plan. Public safety should always be the paramount goal. Moreover, the village master plan, you'll see here, actually has enhancement of public safety as one of its goals, and the Village Homes Association states that its purpose is to promote the health and safety and welfare of the residents. So this is a goal, probably the paramount goal of our master plan. I think the evidence is clear from the photos and testimony that extending the road without an emergency gate will present a significant risk. Therefore, it violates the master plan and violates 60301. It also fails to comply with approval standard 60307, which requires providing adequate transportation improvements for three reasons. First, it treats Oxford Peak, it creates, it turns it into a collector road, which it is not and can never become. It endangers public safety. And third, they fail to provide a proper traffic impact study. The primary responsibility lies with the applicant. Douglas County has traffic impact criteria that says the scope of the study shall be commensurate with operational and safety impacts. In fact, the applicant, in a letter to South Metro Fire District in December, stated that GPS systems might direct additional traffic onto Oxford Peak Lane. They described the impact as unknown, and they did absolutely nothing to determine what the impact would be of that pass-through traffic. They ignore the traffic from 100 homes, they only deal with their 10 homes, they ignore the traffic through Gate 5. There's going to be more than 3,000 cars coming through Gate 5 in the future, right next to Oxford Peak Lane. They ignore the traffic from the Country Club that's being renovated, that's going to open a Memorial Day, that's going to add a lot of traffic. I think Mr. Larson covered the traffic study. What I want to say is that if you, we believe the evidence is clear, but if you have any doubt about it, that any doubts about our safety concerns should be resolved against the applicant because they failed to do a proper traffic study. Their slides here today are not from a traffic engineer. Their slides here today are not from a traffic engineer. They're a little bit self-serving. They should have done that before. I ask you to please vote no on the application. I'm not opposed to development. I am opposed to a pass-through road without an emergency gate that's going to allow vehicles pass through and endanger our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paulia. Further comments from our citizens?
Good afternoon, Commissioner. My name is Milad Matta. I live in 6205 Oxford Peak Lane since May 2003. My concern during that time, I can see the health impact by going up and hell for the ambulance, the paramedics for our neighbors. Adding additional transportation is going to slow the response of those units to our residents. For the safety of our residents, any accident by additional traffic will impact and could have devastated their family as a result of those accidents. I argue you to vote no and turn this application down. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Any further citizen comment?
Good afternoon. My name is David Beat Bell, 6218 Oxford Peak Lane. I'll make my comments really brief. I think Mr. Buster made a very compelling presentation. It was informative to me. And I think at the essence here, Mr. Buster and his group believe that there will not be a significant increase in traffic. Clearly, our group believes there will be. And certainly, in this day and age, I have to believe we can do better than he said, she said. We've got to be able to get better data and better perspective on what the impact will be. I'm not opposed to development in any way. I'm quite interested in the development. I think we have great opportunities within the village. And I'm not particularly concerned about the impact of nine homes or 10 homes, 11 homes, 12 homes. I'm concerned about the impact of a new through-street, and that's not just nine, 10 homes. It's the 67 now that are immediately south or east of that, and anyone who has access to the village, whether it's resident, visitor, or delivery person, staff. I understand we may believe that there won't be a significant increase in traffic from through-traffic, but we see it today daily. My office looks right out on the street, and we have construction vehicles and misguided travelers each and every single day already using that street, and it doesn't go through. And so I use that as a directional data point that I think we have a significant concern here that warrants further consideration. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Billy.
My name is Kyle Surby. I live at 6215 Oxford Peak Lane. My wife and I, who cannot be here today, we are both opposed to the extension as proposed. The reason being, we have two small kids that are always on the street, up and down it right now, riding their bikes. And the pass-through road as proposed, the increase in traffic with the road as it is, as it was, with the blind curves, with the tight and narrow road, does present a risk to them. I'm sitting up here in front of you today as a father. If you guys have kids, I hope you see it the same way that I do and that my neighbors do. It's one of those things that we only have one time to get it right. Once this thing is approved, there's no going back. And I guess, as a father of two small kids, God willing, maybe add another one, as a father of two small kids, it's one of those of, we have time to step back and get it right. And we have the Homes Association, we have the South Metro Fire Chief, who both support the emergency gate. In that fashion, that's probably something that is acceptable, and probably something that should be reviewed and not just approving the application as it is today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Further citizen comment?
Hello, my name is Amber O'Neill. I live at 6312 Holy Cross Lane, and I border Oxford Peak. It's one of the streets that borders my home. I agree that I have small children, and they use this road every single day. They ride their bikes on it every single day to go see their friends, and they are absolutely wrong with the amount of traffic that this is going to cause. I am in agreement that I am not opposed to the development. I simply want them to use Country Club Parkway instead of Oxford Peak Lane to save our children and all the future children that hopefully bless those roads. So please consider having them use Country Club Parkway instead of Oxford Peak Lane as their main thoroughfare. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Good afternoon. My name is Paul Riddlin. I live at 6319 Holy Cross Lane. Holy Cross Lane intersects Oxford Peak. I guess I'm a neighbor of my neighbor who just spoke. Commissioners, thank you for the time this afternoon. Matt, that was a great presentation. I've been in your shoes before. Don't agree with all of your conclusions, but it was a good job, and thank you for that. Great comments from the audience as well. I'm speaking in opposition of the proposed action of extending the Oxford Peak Lane onto Country Club. I speak to you not only as a homeowner who's concerned about my property values and the health, I guess, the peace and quiet in the neighborhood, but also as an experienced civil engineer with training and experience in transportation and planning and design. I have over 30 years of experience in the business. I've worked on projects in residential development, so I've been in his shoes before. Traffic studies, master planning, developed master plan, transportation plans for municipalities. I've done design of streets, bridges, roundabouts, and other utilities for municipalities, county governments, and state and federal highway departments, and other major heavy civil projects. Agree with Oxford Peak Lane being designed as a local road. It was not designed as a collector, and making this change would change its functional classification to at least a collector, if not more. I disagree with the supposition that these traffic calming measures, the signage, the curvature and such would discourage traffic. I raised four kids, three of them are girls, and I can guarantee you, they don't think like engineers. They do what they want to do, and they don't pay attention to science. I have an app that monitors their movements, and they speed way too often. Hopefully, I'm not the only one that does that. It is not cost-effective or really even practical to upgrade the street to meet this new classification. Would increase maintenance costs, reduce safety to the homeowners in the area, and there are a lot of really cute kids that use the street all the time. Those aren't really staged photos. It happens every day, and would create traffic problems, especially up by Gate 5, especially the intersection of Chase Lane and Oxford Peak. Really, Country Club Drive is the proper outlet for this development and should be used. I respect the rights of the developer. Thank God we still live in a free country, and their right to maximize their return on investment, but it shouldn't be done at the expense of existing homeowners and the safety of our kids. I hope you'll respect our wishes and design. Deny the application. Just going to go over just a little bit. I would support the development if there were an emergency gate with controlled access to fire. I do see that being an improvement. I hadn't seen that before. It's what I was going to suggest, actually, but there would be some advantage to the community to have additional egress and access to the fire department, as long as it's a controlled gate situation. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Riddlin. Further comments from the gallery today?
Hi, Commissioner. I'm Josh McCrory. I live at 6240 Mount Snuffles Place. I'm right where that extension would begin on Oxford Peak Lane. I'll make it quick for you. I've got to pick up my child from school, but I do have three kids that play there on the road. I think the biggest thing is, how do you address the fire department's concerns with that 300 feet? I think there are other options that are worth the safety benefits, and that could be one less lot. And I also think the other consideration is to think about, where does the fire department come to get to those homes that have been proposed? Those 10 homes, most likely, they would come from Country Club Lane and turn up Oxford Peak if that were to go, and so that cul-de-sac, they wouldn't go all the way around to get to Oxford Peak Lane and then come down, is guess my point. So the quickest way would be off of that Country Club Lane road. So I don't see that as limiting the ability of the fire department to get to those houses. And like I said, I think the other thing is, maybe one less lot, then you have that 300 feet back. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCrory.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Alfredo Sanchez. I live at 6275 Shabano Peak, which is one of the six cul-de-sacs that border Oxford Peak.
I'm sorry, sir. Could you state your name and address for the record? I didn't catch that.
Alfredo Sanchez at 6275 Shabano.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez.
We moved to the village in 2018 from Texas. I have three daughters, two of which are young drivers. My third daughter will be driving next summer. So I want you guys to think about those teenagers driving in our streets. In the last couple of years, I have noticed how the demographics of the village have changed with a number of children, families with children moving in. So I just ask for your common sense and your understanding and the support of my neighbors that this is not a necessary plan. Again, I do support the development. However, I do not support the expansion of these roads as it is planned right now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez.
Commissioners, thank you. My name is Chris Reed, 6245 LDNTA Peak Place. It's one of the cul-de-sacs that's off of Oxford Peak. I'm a father as well. We've lived off of Oxford for probably the better part of six months, and it's something to behold. I don't know if you all have been there. I don't know if you've seen the livelihood of the streets, the families. I don't know if you've seen the sanctity of the area. It's what drew us in, the safety, the country road feel. As you've seen in the pictures, and I'm not going to repeat what's been told by my neighbors, but as you've seen in the pictures, these roads are not designed for that kind of throughput traffic. Country Club Drive is. There are sidewalks on Country Club Drive. There's not on Oxford Peak. I really just wanted to come up here, say thank you for your time. Please take compassionate consideration of what's been said here today and take into account, like my other neighbor said, we have one chance to get this correct, right? So let's work together, make sure that that's correct and works for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Further citizen comment? Okay. Troy, I know we had some online comment earlier. Do we still have some online comment?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. I'll be checking first with Alan. He had his hand up and then down. Alan, you're unmuted if you'd like to make your comment. Okay. I guess Alan does not wish to comment. So we're going to go ahead and move on to Christina Haley. Christina, you're unmuted. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Christina Haley, 6203 Oxford Peak Lane. I'm opposed to extending Oxford Peak Lane to Country Club Drive. It would endanger our lives, our neighbors' lives, and the lives of the children that use the street. The huge issue is safety. My husband and I are original owners. We know the street well and drive it slowly, as it is narrow, only 20 feet wide, with no sidewalks, trails, or shoulders. In fact, in some places, there are ditches. We have rule mailboxes on posts that run right up to the road. It twists and turns steeply downhill. Cars have trouble in the winter snow going up and down it. The good thing going forward is the children. Our neighborhood has plenty of them, lots and lots of kids, running, walking, on bikes, skateboards, motorized vehicles, and very often in groups without adults, traveling from one house to another, going to the neighborhood pool and playing fields on Country Club Drive. Converting our street to a through-street with a tremendous increase in traffic would be extremely dangerous for these children. We are retired and walk down the street, going by trucks and cars, allowing us limited sight visibility. Our children are grown, but when they visit, our grandchildren beg to go knock on their friends' doors to catch up. Kids ring our front doorbell to play with our dog. Oxford Peak Lane was not designed to be a collector road. It was designed as a local neighborhood road going nowhere except to the pool and recreation center that we were promised when we bought our home. There's a picture of this sign in your package. Unfortunately, we were unable to attend the planning commission meeting. Our Homes Association was not represented there either, as it was a direct-time conflict with our annual Homes Association meeting. One of our residents did attend by Zoom and was allowed three minutes to oppose the extension. Two of the planning commissioners voted against the extension. The developer was allowed unlimited time to present his side, and when we reviewed the video, we heard many points that we would have challenged, but only our one person's time was up. By the way, Matt Buster from Manhard just spoke for over 30 minutes. We have fought this extension on our street for two years. Before this filing, we thought we had it licked, when the county made it a condition to have the emergency gate on Golden Bear Lane for the 67 homes. If Oxford Peak Lane is extended, all those 67 homes could go on Country Club Drive for a short distance, and then the next right onto Oxford Peak Lane, and right out through Gate 5, and come back the same way, and then run around the emergency gate. We are frustrated and so tired of spending so much time and worry on something that is so obviously wrong. Before I sign off, a couple of questions. How can the applicant use a traffic analysis from the 1980s? Amazon wasn't around then, no deliveries from them. Also, can the developer keep handing you a series of 10 home plans and get some kind of easier application process? It would be so dangerous to add a tremendous amount of traffic to the small street when the collector road, Country Club Drive, is right there. Thank you for your time. Phew! Should I make it three minutes?
You're pretty darn close. Good job. Thank you, Ms. Haley. Troy, do we have additional comment online?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I have Beth. Beth, you are unmuted. Go ahead.
Hi. This is Beth Pauka, 6213 Oxford Peak Lane. I think that a lot of the safety concerns have already been covered, the narrowness of the street, the winding nature of the road, and the steep grade in various places. I wanted to point out one quick thing about the master plan and the desire to be consistent with the master plan and the times when being inconsistent with the master plan may be the better decision. Specifically, Gate 5 and Chase Lane, formerly known as Legay, was not included in the master plan. It wasn't really conceptualized until around 1999, 2000, 2001, after a dispute with Kesselpints North, where the village was trying to locate a gate in the northwest corner of the village onto Forest Park and the drive in Kesselpints North. And the residents there objected naturally, because that road was similar to this one, you know, a narrow, winding, long road with many houses and families. And the move of that proposed gate over here to this part of the village at that point in time, not previously included in the master plan, ended up being a great boon to the village and is now the village's busiest gate. So that's something that was, you know, a good thing. Now, we have to take into account any other need to make changes to the master plan as time moves along and conditions have changed. Oxford Peak Lane is, you know, home to so many families that you've seen, and everybody, including the you know, including, you know, the HOA and including Developer Care about the safety here. And from my point of view, we would be happy with the addition of an emergency gate to block traffic from going straight through to Country Club. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Do we have any further online comment?
I have no further online comment.
Okay. With that, I'm going to close citizen comment and then bring it back to the applicant to respond to what was heard.
Hello, this is Matt Buster again. I'm wondering if we could bring up our old slide deck, so we might start with the graphic. I think this one is probably best for conversational purposes going forward. But, you know, I am a civil engineer. I've been working in Castle Pines for several decades, and while I am a civil engineer that knows a little bit about traffic, I think I'd like to have our traffic consultant, who knows a lot more about traffic than I do, speak about some of the traffic concerns we've heard. So let me turn this over to Chris McGrannahan with LSC, and we'll discuss traffic first. After Chris concludes, I'd also like to have Jack Bickers, the overall master developer of Castle Pines, speak after Chris is finished. Can you zoom in? There's one other slide. If you want to just talk.
And then this is a pointer.
How's that? Is that better?
That works, yeah. Good afternoon, and thank you for a chance to respond. My name is Chris McGrannahan. I'm a professional traffic operations engineer with LSC Transportation Consultants with about 30 years of experience. I'm going to start, I'm going to try to hit all these points. I'm going to start with two points in the county's comprehensive master plan and transportation master plan. These are both stated goals. Promote well-connected road network to minimize unnecessary driving. Okay. I would argue that connecting Oxford Peak Lane meets this goal. For instance, these residents exist. If they want to go south to Castle Rock, to, you know, the outlet malls, to anywhere to the south, currently they go up, over, and cross, what is that, Holy Cross, and then down. With the connection of this road, at least the southern half of these lots are going to come through this new road and come down. So you'll actually see a decrease in trips on this roadway. So one of the gentlemen here that's on this road, he'll likely see a decrease in traffic because the residents south of him no longer have to go north to go south. Likewise, our one and two residents, if they want to go out Gate 5, they're going to go this way if our proposal is approved. If not, they'll come down and then around this way. So the vehicle miles traveled will be greater without a public connection here. So that was the first goal. The second goal, provide connection between existing and future subdivisions to shorten trip lengths. That's somewhat related to the point we just talked about, but it's very similar in that, you know, right now, a lot, the lots right here have to go up, over, and down because this has already been closed, so they can't go, they can't go south this way now. And if this is closed, they won't be able to go this way either. So the argument, one of the arguments is that these folks want this connection to go through, so their traffic goes down. Another big thing that came up was cut through traffic. Nothing to do with these 10 homes, but that you're going to all of a sudden create this alternative route to get to Gate 5. To summarize, Country Club Drive is the collector. It's wider, has a faster design, and has less side friction. And by side friction, I mean driveways, on-street parking, things like that. Oxford Peak Lane is a local street. It's narrower, has a slower design, and has more side friction, noted by all the slides presented by the neighbors, cars, kids playing, all the reasons why someone wouldn't want to drive down that road. So that's the argument against why we're going to redirect 3,000 trips through this road. I mean, you go through here once, you're not going to do it again because of all, I hate to say it, but a lot of the pictures the neighbors posted show why you wouldn't want to go that way. There's a lot going on on that road. Kids playing in the street, cars parked, it's a slower speed, there's more curves. You know, it may be the same distance from here to here within, you know, 1%, but this is much faster. This is something, like Matt said, a few folks may try it. You know, the only way I can see somebody that doesn't live in here, driving all the way from one end to the other, is if, you know, they have a friend here and they come down, visit the friend, and then they go down to Castle Rock. So I just don't see there being this huge redirection of traffic onto this roadway for the reasons we talked about. Country Club was designed to have more traffic. This was designed to have less traffic. So it may connect all the way through, but it's a stretch to call it a through street. It doesn't really, it's not going to be the through route for just about anybody. If you live here, you know, if you're in this eight, nine, 10, you'll probably go around. You know, if you live up here, you'll probably go around, but all these people in the middle, it's going to distribute trips much better. So when you have one, two, and now potentially three access points, if we close this, this one's going to have 95 trips a day. These two combined will be about 600 or 700. If you open all three of them up, it gets more distributed and it spreads the traffic around a little bit better, and particularly the folks on Holy Cross will have less traffic. These folks in the middle will kind of go one way or the other, whereas now, all these folks have to go north regardless of where they're going. So a few other things I'd like to point out is that the 1985 study, while quite dated, assumed that this, the road that we're now calling Oxford Peak Lane was well over 1,000 trips a day. It was like 1,300 and something vehicles. Currently, we have 68 homes up here. These 10, and as you heard, maybe two more here. So that would be a total of 80 homes. Those 80 homes combined will generate about 750 trips. So while the old study is 30 years old, it assumed a lot more traffic than what we're assuming now, like 600 cars more, actually. And then the last comment I wanted to make, it wasn't really answering a question, but it was in response to what some of the, I thought of some of the things I heard, is that I would almost certainly think that my client would agree that all the construction traffic comes in right here. No one's going to be driving through the neighborhood for construction traffic. That would be a big no-no in my book. So that's me answering a lot of the questions, why we think the regional traffic will stay on Country Club Road and not cut through here, and why providing a connection here helps further redistribute these trips to better balance between the three access points and actually will have less traffic on Holy Cross. And then I'd like to turn it over, back over to Matt now.
So, you know, just alluding to, there was a lot of public comment on how the traffic has not been studied since the 80s. You know, that's not true. What we've often done is stated the fact that the 1985 traffic study essentially assumed much greater volumes, as Chris mentioned, than what we're seeing today. So this is typical within several jurisdictions, Douglas County not being accepted, whereby if your traffic volumes are less than you projected and the roadways network that you designed back in those days are volumes that are less than were anticipated, we don't go and redo a full traffic study. We simply show that we're in conformance with the assumptions made. Now granted, there has been a lot of conversation related to Gate 5 and Gate 5 not being shown on the plan development. But what I can tell you is Gate 5 is regional traffic. It is not local traffic. And the Gate 5 traffic comes through and goes one of two ways. It either goes north to the larger community in the north and northwest of Castle Pines Village, or it goes south, and that southern traffic is what you see on the map before you, are these residences, as well as the Country Club members that I spoke about earlier. But the sake that we're saying 3,000 trips would come down this road is so fictitious and so erroneous that I just want to make that of record, that there will never be 3,000 trips using this road. The majority of the traffic that comes through Gate 5 travels north. That's where the most homes are. The southern portion is the limited portion of that traffic. So I just wanted to highlight that subject. I think now I turn it over to Jack Bickers and let Jack talk about some of the history since Jack has been involved in this project from day one.
Stay with your pointer in case I need you to... Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to address you about this particular plat. I've asked Matt to control the pointer if I need to get to the map because I'll waste a lot of time if I'm trying to do that myself. So the, I think I can bring this more into proper perspective. Castle Pines has been underway since the early 80s. I often tell people I'm on the 42nd year of my tenure project. The, it has been a labor of love to, it's a fabulous piece of property. I am so pleased at the way that we've been able to work with Douglas County through many, many years to bring it to what it is today. As you know, we have two golf courses in here. We have about a third golf course in terms of the ridge at Castle Pines North on the north end of our development. Matt, I might ask you just go back to the more of a master plan view, if you would. Yeah, that one's fine. We are presently somewhere between 95% and 100% platted in the village. I'd say probably 97% platted, probably 94, 95% built out. Our ultimate build-out is headed for a number, I almost, I'm quite confident in saying it won't reach 2,000 units. We're zoned for 3,000 units. So, and I'm going to circle quickly back to the traffic since that's where we're focused, and then I'll move to some of the broader topics. But keep in mind that the traffic references to, by the residents that this hasn't been, and by the HOA, that this hasn't been updated in some time and there's a lot more traffic. It's quite contrary. The traffic study on which the 85 plan was developed, we started the development in 81. 85, 86 was the benchmark when we added this north third of Castle Pines Village, roughly. So at that time, the traffic study was based on an ultimate build-out of 3,000 units. As I said, we're not going to hit 2/3 of that. So anything that was accounted for in the original study is going to be dramatically less just by the way we've developed the village. And we're down to, like I said, the last 5%, we probably have, and the last 5% of really development, including homes, probably the last 3% in terms of plats. So the remaining plats is probably going to be a combination of two to four more plats that only encompass 100 units or less. And we're at something, I think, just under between 18, probably 1850 right now, ballpark numbers, by way of platted units. The Gate 5, when we acquired the northern part of the village back in the mid 80s, we knew we needed an access to the grand east. The property to the east of us, just circle that with your laser map. That area at that time was owned by a family by the name of Legay. If you haven't been in the county for some time, I know you're all familiar with that name. We started working on an easement to Gate 5 in the mid 80s. It took a while once we even had agreement from the Legays to do it, to figure out the design, because they only wanted to create the easement if it also worked for their property. So we had to kind of back into how that road was going to make the connection to Gate 5. At the time that Gate 5 became our primary entrance into Castle Pines, and that replaced the Forest Park Gate entrance. Point to that map. So Forest Park was a placeholder as a permanent gate, but we did not embark on any further development under our master plan that would use Forest Park. We did not, I want to say that again, we did not approach any plats that would use Forest Park, waiting to get Legay worked out. So we knew Gate 5 was coming, what we now call Gate 5. A number of the comments from the residents, I want to point out, were kind of based on, oh, we didn't know that Gate, you know, Gate 5, this loop on Oxford Peak Lane was based on a whole different road system. It didn't include Gate 5. That wasn't the case. The point to filings 40, 27 and 28, Matt?
27 is east of Country Club, 28 is west.
And I think, unless I missed somebody's reference to where they live today, I think all the residents that spoke live in filing 27. Point that out again. So Matt had on this slide deck the final plat for filing 27. That happened, so the opening of Gate 5 and the closing, or the turning of the Forest Park Gate into an emergency gate and making Gate 5 the northern gate for Castle Pines happened prior to the plat of filing 27. So anybody that bought in filing 27, including the developer, Toll Brothers did not close until they knew we had Gate 5 that was going to be able to be delivered. That was a contingency under the Toll Brothers deal. Toll Brothers is the developer that developed the homes in both filing 27 and 28. So the notion that Gate 5 was a surprise that the residents didn't know about is just simply not correct. The Gate 5 was delivered in conjunction with the plating of 27 and 28. So every resident that would think that that gate was not going to be their primary entrance when they bought in filing 27 would be either a naive statement or an incorrect statement. Matt, go back to the master plan, if you would. Our master plan in the village, I think is, everybody well understands, everybody in the room really well understands, Castle Pines Village is a piece of property that is very unique. It's a very unique land form, very unique vegetation, very unique wildlife. Putting this master plan together on this difficult attract was no easy task. This wasn't just a flat piece of property that would take a typical grid. We had to make the roads fit. And the process for making those fit, even going back to the original 2,000 acres and then extending this same philosophy into the northern third of the village, was figuring out how we can get a loop road to work throughout the village. And a few of the slides today have shown that, and we're only showing the northern, 2/3 of the village here, but Matt can kind of show how that main loop road just encircles the village. It does the same on the south. It continues from the south there, it comes back. So Gates 1 and 2 on the north end of the village are across from one another. Gates 4 and 5 on the south end are across from each other. Hence, we needed that because we had to solve, if we wanted this to be a gated community, how to, you can't have a gated community and end up with, you know, 15 gates to access it just because you have a difficult piece of property. You had to figure out the logistics of getting those two things to meet on the public road, Happy Canyon Road in both the north and the south. Then when we added the north part of the village, I'm sorry that this just turned the map on you, so it just rotated 90 degrees to the left, and I apologize for that. As I think Matt said, when we turned this map upright, it just got where you couldn't read it. So we apologize, but this is better than nothing. I do have the same map physically here if I need to point at something to be clear that I can't quite reach the screen, so just for point of reference, and as you ask questions, I've got that available. I've got that available. So go back to the colored map, Matt. Please. So the system of roads in the village, and when you come off the main loop road, and this was principally for fire protection, emergencies and the like, was that just simply having a road loop the village, that was number one essential. But number two essential was to have a bunch of subloops that went off in the different areas such as Oxford Peak. And the purpose of that is that you just have certain...if something happens on the main loop road, you need a primary, a secondary access, even if that...and not to call those roads collector roads because they were not designed to be collector roads. And our intent is not to turn a collector road. Our loop road is the only, I believe, the only collector road, Matt, category?
That's correct.
And then there was a...what's the category? Super collector. The super collector was Happy Canyon Road. Collector was then the loop road within the village. Two more tiers working down, Class 1 and Class 2. Class 2, I'll come back to Class 1, Class 2 was cul-de-sacs. Class 1 was all of these subloops and roads that had a through connection as opposed to being a cul-de-sac. So again, let me state Local 1. I'm sorry, Local 1 and Local 2, I misstated, not Class 1 and Class 2. Local 1 and Local 2. And those are the standards used by the Castle Pines Metropolitan District. So let me just say that again if I may, not to belabor things, but...so we have a collector road in the village, which is the loop road. We have...
Local 1.
Local 1, thank you, that are the subloops within the village such as Oxford Peak Lane. You then have Class 2, which are the cul-de-sacs. So they're not a through road, they're a turnaround. Through the years, we've had a number...this comes back to one of the things that we presented to the Fire District. We have a number of roads. It was presented earlier that one of the options we considered here was a long cul-de-sac in this area. I'll come back to several comments on that. But the length of that from my point at hand was that that was going to be 1,520 feet long. The standard is 1,200 feet. That's an updated standard that the counties adopted, the Metro District adopted it. But we probably have in the village, I haven't counted them exactly, but I have counted them by order of magnitude, we probably have 12 to 15 cul-de-sacs that exceed 1,200 feet. And many that are well in excess of 1,500 feet. So our request to the Fire District to consider a 1,500-foot cul-de-sac was not out of line. It was not the super extraordinary event. But the answer we got back from the Fire Department, appropriately so, was that their standards have been tightened for all the emergency and wildfire reasons. Further, they said, you know, for us to really seriously consider a variance to that and allow a slightly longer cul-de-sac, we would have to understand that there's a physical constraint that doesn't allow you to have a through road. This particular plat didn't fit that category. There is an obvious ability to go with the through road. In fact, it is a Class 1 road, Oxford Peak Lane, that's part of the master plan. And so it's never been our intent to bring this up...to bring Oxford Peak Road up to a collector road by any stretch. The 10 lots that are being proposed does not want Oxford...just consistent with the residents, does not want this to become Oxford Peak Lane a through road. We have the same interest. You know, it's going to be residential street. It is Class 1 because it's a through connecting road, but it's not a Class 2 cul-de-sac. And for that purpose, we are consistent with that. We want to prevent this from becoming a collector road. The primary issues, if I can synthesize down the road issues, because that's where this whole meeting, I think, is honing down to being focused, is what is the traffic generated by this development? I think that fits into three categories. I'll tell you the three categories and I'll explain my reasoning through those. The first is what are the 10 homes going to generate and even the additional two homes when the super block is platted to additional two lots in the future? And that is, we've already made that decision, that will be the limit of the super block in the future. And the super block's all the way up a budding country club roads. So the notion that that's going to just further compound the numbers that are going to turn north and go through Oxford Peak Lane would, I think, be obvious by just its location in the map. But back to the 10 lots. The homes, and this is just all the experts speak to the standard, but the standard is 9.4 vehicle trips a day per home. What's the standard? What would you...
ITE.
International Traffic.
International.
Traffic. So that, you know, so the notion that we're underestimating what these homes are going to generate is just incorrect. You know, I mean, again, that's the average. That's just been the...that's the average. That's what all the engineers use when you're trying to figure out how many traffic trips you have. The further thing that Chris has even brought up, which is just a sidebar, but now's a good time to throw it out, is that you have less peak hour trips in a community like Castle Pines. And the reason for that is just, you know, in a community that's a little more affluent that you have a little less of the blue collar workforce that has to, you know, be at a job right during peak hours going and coming is a little less of an issue in a community like Castle Pines. So, you know, I don't know if Chris's numbers, that do that in or not, but it's a true statement. The...so the Oxford Peak Lane was always deemed to be a through road. And trying...and so a couple of other things that were said by the residents that were incorrect that I just want to correct respectfully, that I do want to correct it. This discussion started probably two and a half, three years ago, maybe even a little more, with the looming development of the Upper Meadow. Matt circled the Upper Meadow. Okay? It's...so two of those plats have been done. Ours is the third, there will be a fourth. So Matt circled the first. Those are the 60 lots filing 41. Circle the second. Second, there was a super block plat, which is now part of this plat. That's where Matt's waving.
That's filing 44A.
44A, okay. So 44A. And then 623, Matt? 623 has been sold to the same developer that has the 60 lots and he has six lots of the in-between plat, which was nine lots. And that the...I heard a number of the folks say this, the HOA may have incorrectly said this, but the notion that, you know, they're arguing that there's perhaps 100 lots by rounded numbers, that's about right, 100 lots in the entirety of the Upper Meadow. 60...you know, nine of those have been platted, we're plating 10 more here and the corner piece is contemplated...that's not mine, that's owned by the developer that bought the 60 lots, but the range contemplated there is in the 16 to 20 unit range. But our plat, and I want to make about four points, I'll try not to make them all with, you know, out of my mouth at the same time and get you confused, but the developer of those homes, the builder on those homes, wanted to buy the plat we're now talking about, but they wanted to do cluster housing just as they're doing in the rest of what you see on the 60 lots. And I just said simply no. I just said I'm not willing to do that. And I'm not willing to do that for sake of having the transition zone of the plat we're looking at today to be both the transition respectful of the lots that are right above them, right there, as well as the lots in Oxford Peak Lane. By zone densities, we could have been at least, in the plat that I had before you, we could have been at least twice as dense as we are. Approximately the right half of this development is zoned for four units to the acre, the left half, two units to the acre. We only have 10 lots on probably 12 or 13, 14 acres. But so we could have...so the contemplated type of plan that the other developer wanted to do could have been done, but I simply made the business decision that wasn't the right land plan to be compatible with the neighbors. So I reduced the plan to 10 lots. And in doing so, we also went from two-sided loading homes on both sides of the road to loading virtually all of the, most of the homes, eight of the 10 on the southern side of the road and only two on the uphill side of the road. These also turn the corner on Oxford Peak. So other than a neighbor or two that's right on that corner, and I understand a couple of those neighbors are here, but do respect to them, these homes are not going to be seen routinely by the other homes. So the issue is back to traffic. So back to the point I started making, I got off on one of my tangents, I apologize. So the traffic is really threefold if I'm going to oversimplify. It's the traffic generated by our development, I've already spoken of that. 10 homes times 9.4 trips is 94 trips. That's the traffic study that Chris did and provided. The second area of the traffic on now the connected Oxford Peak Lane is all of the tri...excuse me, all of the traffic on the existing 68 homes, if I'm getting that number correct, that are in filing 27, representing the residents here today. Back to the master plan, Matt, please.
I was showing the 60 lots.
Okay. No, that's good. The colored one's going to be easier, Matt. The...yeah, that's good. So that traffic's already accounted for, it's already platted, residents already living there. Some of that traffic will redistribute. Chris spoke to that very well and more professionally than I could. So some of those trips will end up coming south, out the southern end of Oxford Peak Lane. Some will continue to go north, but those are already accounted for trips in their scope of impact on their development. The third category, and I think really what this whole exercise comes down to, is traffic that views this now as a through road and trying to prevent that traffic from becoming a through road shortcut. If I could synthesize everything today, and I'm going to make comments on other matters that I...just so I think you'll be able to see that other matters have been thought through as well, but I think that's really where this whole discussion comes down to. And the number of vehicle trips that come through Gate 5 are, as Matt said, the preponderance of those go north presently. The ones that go south would be coming south for three purposes. The cliffs, which is 23 lots. The Summit Development, the 60 lots and the extra six lots. Our lots, which I already talked to a moment ago. And the Country Club is the third category. And the Country Club, very importantly, sits on Country Club Drive and their entrance, Matt, show Val where the entrance is if you don't mind. Yeah, right there. Comes into the Country Club. Country Club's a 390-member, 395-member club. More, excuse me, more with social memberships. The...so Matt, go to your map that shows the distance of the two routes. I'm going to bounce around a little bit, but I think I can tie back my point here. Yes. So I asked Matt to take a look at distance. I'm going to leave aside for the moment travel speeds, other things, but just pure distance. So if you come in Gate 5, which you can see just to the right of the A there, and you hit Oxford Peak, which is the argument that everybody's making, that all that traffic, now that this road's connected, it's going to come down Oxford Peak. So I asked Matt run the distance between Point A where Oxford Peak hits Chase Road. Chase Road, for all intents and purposes, is a collector road just like the loop road. It's the access end from the gate, so I consider it a collector road just as A is colored here as part of the loop road. So I asked Matt to run the distance between A and B where Oxford Peak comes back to Country Club Road. The distance, the difference over one route, the route that was longer was the blue route going through Oxford Peak. Because a lot of this comes back. The thing I've said all along that I think is a very credible comment and different than would have been imagined 40 years ago when this project started as GPS, you know, what's GPS going to do to traffic? And I think, you know, I give the, you know, residents, you know, my respect to that issue. I think that that is, you know, a issue if GPS picks up the wrong signs and starts routing traffic inadvertently, but nonetheless routing traffic through there, those could be additional trips. So the distance from A to B, back to my point, A is 4,300 feet, B is 4,245, 55 feet different, virtually the same. Now you consider, are you going to stay on the collector road if you just...if you want to get to any of those developments south of Point B on Country Club Road? And I want to...I'm sorry, but I jumped over a point that I was headed to make a few minutes ago, I want to make it right here. So the residents were raising the issue that you're going to have about 100 units in the Upper Meadow, not 10, and that's all the traffic that's going to come on Oxford Peak Lane. That's incorrect. Because if all of that traffic is...has to come back out to Country Club, the loop road, the collector road, and they would have to be going north up, hit Point B and decide, now I'm going to...am I going to take a right here and go on the little residential road or am I going to stay on the road I'm already on to Gate 5? I think the answer is obvious just simply based on the current nature of the road, notwithstanding the additional things that we've said that we would offer up in terms of traffic calming on Oxford Peak. I'll come back to those later. Secondly, I asked Matt if the argument is people are going to take the shortcut on Oxford Peak to get to the Country Club. So now you're looking at Point A, come in Gate 5, hit Point A. Do I take a left there as a shortcut to Country Club because now I want to get to Point C? That's the entrance into the Country Club. So under that scenario, the blue road would hit Point B and it would actually be colored blue further up to Point C, if you follow me, because you have to come all the way around, hit the stop sign at where Oxford Peak hits Country Club, come back to Point C to get to the Country Club. That route is 1,000 feet longer than just going from Point A to Point C directly. So now, just the distance alone. Now you add travel speeds. Travel speed on Country Clubs, about 10 miles an hour or more. That can...that differential can be further distinguished with traffic calming on Oxford Peak Lane. So you've got that. We're proposing a stop sign. I'm going to come back to these later, I just want to gloss over them, but we're proposing a stop sign where our piece of Oxford Peak would hit the current Oxford Peak. We're proposing a speed table in the middle of our development. We're proposing another one for the Metro District and the HOA can, you know, may want to weigh in on that, but for the Metro District to consider in the middle of the existing Oxford Peak. If the issue is really slow down the traffic, we already have too much traffic and people speeding through our neighborhoods, then let's slow it down, including our street. That's addressing the... That's addressing the problem. But, the notion, go back to the map, but the notion that somebody's going to, when the distance is already comparable, notwithstanding the slower speeds, the stops that you would incur on Oxford Peak, and the speed tables, we've mentioned, you know, nodded through road signs, all the calming things that you can actually do and be effective with the real traffic calming, those all further change the amount of time from get, to get from A to B. The thing, I didn't quite close the loop on, but the 60 units, the six additional those units in the subsequent filing in, in the NEME development, and 623, and I think our residents perhaps just don't understand this yet, because this piece hasn't been plotted, but our plat that's before you cuts off access from those approximate 90 units to Oxford Peak, unless they, they have to come back out to Country Club Parkway, and as I said a moment ago, if you're going north in Country Club Parkway, and you've got a shorter route, a faster route, a more, less stops, if you go from Point B to get out Gate 5, and you're already on Country Club going north, you have no stop signs. None. So, the point is that the other 90 units will, were not giving access to those on our plat. We precluded those from getting access up to our piece of Oxford Peak on the plat. Those units already have to come back out to Country Club Parkway. This, this whole debate started back with, oh, you're going to develop 100 units up there, that's 100 units of impact, 100 times 9.4, if they're coming, if they're looking at Oxford Peak as a shortcut, is, you know, it's this much more. We're only at 10, we're 10% of that. I personally had to agree to the breakaway gate, which I did not think was proper planning from a traffic sample, but the current breakaway gate that has been placed on is almost complete. It's engineered, it's under construction, and it's almost complete. And, so, we've already invested the money to do that, and that cuts off 90 of the 100 units from taking that shortcut directly out of filing 41 and those developments. So, the residents have already won, and, and, you know, and the leaders of the group understand this, I think they're just playing the point of still throwing it out there, you know, because it's a, you know, it might confuse the issue, but 90 of, I'm stating for the fact, that, you know, that, that our, our development of the additional Oxford Peak Lane is not, does not allow access from those other two developments, nor, and it will not allow it, including the corner of 623 when that's developed. So, if you're already on Country Club Parkway, going north, wanting to get out Gate 5, there's no way that somebody's, you know, will people try it once? Yeah, I'd say that's going to happen, you know, maybe even a fair bit. Will they try it twice? I can't believe 99% aren't going to learn their lesson the first time they try taking that as a shortcut, if that's truly the issue, after we do what we're talking about. I just can't believe that it, it, for all the reasons we've stated, and you have the stop signs, you have the speed bumps, you have the no-through-street signs, you have the stop sign in the middle of it, it just will not be a timely shortcut, or a convenient shortcut. And nor is it today, if you head through that community, and we want our community of our 10 homes to feel like their community. We don't want ours to feel like an inviting collector road. We're going to put, you know, a entrance monument at the, at Point B, where you enter into our 10 lots. We're further willing to make any concessions by way of cutting off traffic from our development to Oxford Peak Lane during construction, during land infrastructure construction, if the Metro District and the Fire District can agree on, you know, what that policy would be, we're fine, you know, we're also fine dictating to the contractors, will it be respected 100% of the time? No, there will be people that violate it from time to time, but we're, we're, as the developer in our 10 lots, we're more than happy to restrict all the construction access to coming in off of our entrance in Oxford Peak Lane off of Country Club. The last issue I want to bring up, which was the, you know, I heard a lot of comment today, most notably the HOA, stop, slow down, reconsider things, that's exactly what we've been doing for the last few years, and in good faith, reconsidering things. We considered, you know, you know, probably 10 different alternatives with all the hybrids in between, but, you know, we tried to think this through every which way, are there alternatives? And, you know, the first was putting forth the idea for a long cul-de-sac. The Fire Department, for correct reasons, in retrospect, you know, I, you know, I got to the point, you know, that, you know, I don't want to annoy the residents, I want to work with the residents, I'm going to make this all work, we're on the last 3% of our development, you know, of, you know, the other 97% of what we've already delivered in development should show what our intent is, we're, we're not out to, you know, maximize development on every site, we're, I've already said, we're developing at less than 2/3 of the, of the zone density. Could this project have been much more profitable for, you know, the master developer along the way? Absolutely. It, it just, you know, we've tried to do the right thing, we've tried, we've got the neighbor of the two, the Country Club and the Golf Club, you know, they're important to the county, they're important to the state, they're important to our community, they're a threshold member of our community. We've tried to develop everything in a respectful way. I personally, I only, I'm not saying this from a prideful standpoint to impress anybody, I'm just saying it, it's what I love in land development. I've sighted almost every single home and designed almost every single lot line in this development personally. I try to make it work, so the houses work with one another, so they work horizontally as well as vertically. You know, I, and the following through of the completion of this, it's not like we're getting something right in the middle of the 68 homes and saying, now I want to cram 10 more homes right in the middle of your development. We're on the end of the development, and the extension of this road is part of a master plan road network. And that's, and so, when we considered the alternatives, we looked at a long cul-de-sac, and again, I keep finding myself going off in tangents, but as I said, the Fire Department, which I respect this response from, said, in this case, you have a viable option from the Fire Department's standpoint, which is making this a through road. And, so, this is not appropriate for us to give serious consideration to a variant for a longer cul-de-sac, even though you do have precedent for many of those in the village. Then the HOA ran to the Fire Department and said, well, what if we, and we asked them to include us in the meeting, they decided not to, thank you very much, but they ran to the Fire Department and said, no, what if we just add this road and make it a fire road and put a gate up here off the end of the road? Well, what you ended up with was a spaghetti of about six driveways, plus their through road, plus a breakaway gate that, just, and if you have roads over a certain distance, I don't remember the distance, Rich, but, or driveways over a certain distance, you have to loop them back, so, we just ended up with a spaghetti of driveways that just would not simply work. And that was specifically the reason that I had asked the HOA to include Matt in the meeting with the Fire District, but they decided that that, you know, was not something they wanted to do. But Matt would understand that, understand the planning, why that was a nonstarter. We then went from there, I, I thought, well, I started thinking, again, this would appease the residents, what if I take Oxford Peak Lane and turn it down into Silver Leaf, where you have that breakaway gate? Sorry. Lindsey Peak, what did I say? Oh, sorry. I don't know where that came from, Lindsey Peak. And, we looked at that, there were several problems with that. One is, we don't know all the land that we'd take for that, there's a couple of lots, we'd have to go back to those lot owners, they're already sold lots, and say, can we take back some of your land? That's probably a nonstarter, but we didn't even go there, because I wanted to go to the Fire, Fire Department first and just see if it passed the first test. So, I went to the Fire Department, you know, they, I don't want to speak to the Fire Department, but they basically said, you know, Jack, we, see, you've tried to think through, you know, maybe the eight or 10 points of criteria here that we're trying to find through, but there's a, one deal breaker that doesn't work, it doesn't give us a north-south secondary access to get back to Gate 5. They further said, again, I'll let Rich come up later, and if I mistake something, please correct me when we do that, Rich, but he further said, in today's world of wildfires and concerns that something like that could happen, and Castle Pines being the type of natural vegetation that it is, that if there was a to-be-an-evacuation event in this area of the plan, that you would have to go, that their analysis of the probability of the flow of traffic that would be required would be to get them north to Gate 5, to get north on I-25. That would be the ideal route. The, the reason that the, I'm going to see if you can point with me on this, Matt, but the reason our master plan was designed with all these secondary loops was to have a secondary loop for health, safety, welfare, to get people out in the time of emergency or an evacuation. The, if you kind of glaze around the, your eyes around the plan, what you'll see, Matt, go to the pinch point of the development, which is right, you know, adjacent to the driving range, because of the Country Club, in this area, you don't have the ability to get a north-south exit or, or route, is what I meant to say, on the west side of Country Club Drive. Oxford Peak is it. And that does not mean Oxford Peak becomes a collector road, totally different. This is an access point that if you have an emergency, heaven forbid, it's something that closes off your, your Country Club Parkway, heaven forbid, it closes it off something right about where Matt's pointing, so now you have the Country Club traffic, which in my meeting with the Fire Department, it came out that, when they had talked to the HOA, they hadn't even thought about, or hadn't focused in that moment, in that discussion, on the additional traffic that you might have in an evacuation event happening in the eight months a year that the Country Club's open, and having another 300 cars have to come out of the Country Club. So, if you had an event that happened there on Country Club Parkway, you're trying to get people to Gate 5 to the north, and something happens on one of these houses that back up to Country Club, or, or that impedes one way or another your main access, this is a pinch point in the development where we just don't have any other optional routes, Oxford Peak. It's, Matt, just show that place right there, but just right there to the boundary of the property, just right there, it's narrower than anyplace else in the master plan. That's why that road has to be there. And so, what really hit home with me after the last meeting with the Fire Department, I'm almost done closing this out, give me five or 10 more minutes, I apologize for being long-winded, but what really hit home with me the last time we met with the Fire Department was that this north-south road is more essential, and that, that looking at these options, just because we have a small group of residents saying, we don't want any more traffic coming by our house, when we, and they may be under the misunderstanding that we're bringing 100 homes through, but we're not, we're developing 10 homes. And, you know, they, they may be under the understanding that, that if we make this a through road, that it's going to become a collector road, but it's not, because we're just as interested in keeping it being a Class 1 road. But, the point that hit home with the Fire Department is, the secondary loops were in the master plan originally, in an 85, only expanded master plan, for a very specific reason. None of these alternatives, none of these alternatives that we've been looking at, I'm guilty, you know, that I, I took a step back and thought, well, you know, maybe it's a shortcut if we just design a long cul-de-sac, we've got a lot of those in the village, maybe that just, if that puts residents bed, we can just get on with our, you know, finishing up our plating in here and be done. But after this last meeting, I looked back and I said, Jack, you've really looked over, past the most important point. The road is there for a reason. Emergency, emergency evacuation, and the secondary Class 1 roads, through roads that are connected, if, if the main loop were to be shut down, especially this close to Gate 5, and this close to traffic also exiting Country Club, the Country, the Country Club as additional traffic in an emergency, this is essential. And there really is no more thinking in my mind that adding yet another breakaway gate, we've already done one, I don't think it was a great design, we already agreed to it, and my point is, the residents started with 100-unit perception problem. We already gave in on the 90 units. We're completing the master plan with the only alignment of this road that's consistent with the master plan, and we're only adding 10 units, ultimately 12 with the two more that would be filling that super block in the future that are already on Oxford Peak Lane. So, they're not going to come back and take the long route virtually ever. So, the, the point is, we stopped, we considered, we looked at every possible route, every iteration, the HOA has a way of, of just saying, we'll just add this gate over here and do this. The rippling effect of every little change, you know, having a redesign that goes through the entire plan, all the construction plans, and yet, when you get to the end of the day, it doesn't meet the master plan. You'll note on our master plan, if you were to look at the, back to this plan, the collector roads, so, sorry, it's sideways there, the collector roads are shown, the Class 1 roads are shown, including Oxford Peak Lane, the Class 2 roads are not, the cul-de-sacs. But, the Class 2 roads, you know, could get modified. We're already modifying some of the Class Road 1 roads by, by minor deviations. This one's a deviation, because it should have just come out south and picked up more of those other 90 units, but by our prior concession, you know, we, we let those 90 units not become a problem to the resident, it's only the 10 units, but it's still, we have to get to the point, go back one more time to the colored map, Matt, sorry? Right there, yeah, that's fine. So, you know, you, you have to be able to, in this emergency route, the blue, Oxford Peak, you have to be able to straddle where the Country Club is coming out on the Country Club Parkway, because if there's a, if the, if the Country Club traffic is coming out, and there's a problem just north of that entrance, then you got to be able to route the traffic to our Oxford Peak to go north. If the problem's in reverse, it's in reverse, but, but you have to have the secondary access, because you not only have the homes in this area in an emergency, but you, or an evacuation, but you also have the Country Club. So, I've just come full circle back to, you know, another breakaway gate, while clever, and while the Fire District, if they were pushed to say, does that work? I think the Fire District would say, I much prefer the through road, because people know where that is, they know where it is, in the event of an emergency. If, if you're asking me if having a breakaway gate with a road that's connected, that has to have a breakaway scaled-down road and a breakaway gate in emergency, you know, that isn't the best message to send our, our residents, but technically, that probably meets our qualification, if everybody else is agreeing on it, you know, HOA's saying, yeah, we agree on it, residents are saying, we agree on it, but, you know, the developer doesn't, we weren't part of that conversation. I'm back to the point that I've got to respect the master plan in terms of these secondary routes. So, I would, I would be happy to answer questions, but, but that's, and, and we've spent two years beating this up every which way, constructively trying. this up every which way, constructively trying, probably $100,000 and of changes and studies to just deal with trying to make these other things work in good faith, because I thought it was the right thing to do, that I really have come full circle. The best thing is the through road, and if the problem really is, the problem's either one thing or another, if the resident's problem is more NEMBIE-oriented, which is, you know, I'm all for development, I just don't want another home next to me, then, you know, that's not a valid argument. And if that's, if that's what is really intended in their minds, then that's not a valid argument for stopping this development. If the argument is, we don't want this to be a collector road, I'm all for that, and putting the, go back one last time to the stop signs, and we've talked to Metro District about these issues, but the two stop signs on the end, one up a A, and you've got, you know, the stop signs are sitting with a pointer, you may not have seen that pointer, so you've got to look where the stop sign pointer goes on the plan. So that's right, the northern ones at Oxford and, I'm sorry, yeah, Oxford Peak and Chase, that's already there. The southern ones at Oxford Peak and Country Club, which will be there with our development. The three in between are all at one intersection, there just happens to be another street coming in there, it happens to be exactly the place where our development hits the existing Oxford Peak Lane. Traffic, per Chris, per the Metro District's traffic consultant as well, really doesn't warrant the need for those stop signs, but those stop signs, I think, address directly the neighbor's concern about traffic going through. If you're going to stop them, bring them, just stop right in the middle of the development, no better place to do it than where Lindsay Peak comes into Oxford Peak. So if we stop them in all three directions there, so those are just one intersection, they're not three different scattered stop signs. So that's a cold, hard stop that cut through traffic would have to deal with. The two speed tables, one we're willing to put in our development, the other, just only because it's most appropriate to go on the existing Oxford Peak. And that's, you know, we're in discussions with the Metro District, they feel it would be most conducive, because that's a straightaway on Oxford Peak where the tendency to increase speed might typically occur. Thirdly, would be lowering and posting the speed limit signs. I want to point out the importance of that, because it's not just lowering the speed limit by 5 miles an hour. If you're not posted in Castle Pines Village, the non-posted streets, Class 2, Class 3, local streets are, I keep saying class, what's the word, Local 1, Local 2, sorry, I keep misstating that, but the Local 1, Local 2 streets are 25 miles an hour if they're not posted. If they're posted, then you can bring them down to 20, and we even have some 15 mile an hour streets. So we have the ability to take it to 20, we have the ability to further take it down to 15. You know, the HOA security, you know, if we ever saw that becoming a often violated or abused speed limit, they can enforce that. It's, you know, we don't have a security force that's trying to man every street and enforce every speed limit every day and every moment of the day. You know, we're more casual about it than that, but when we see problem areas, that's exactly what we do. We bring security to that area, and we put them there for a week or two, and, you know, remind people that that's a speed limit they need to incur. The importance of it is, that's what GPS picks up on. They pick up on these stop signs, they pick up on the speed limit lowering, they pick up on the distance, this is a longer distance, they pick up on the neighborhood, Class 1 versus Collector Street, if they're telling you which one's going to be a faster route. So, you know, GPS is a little bit unpredictable for all of us. You know, you can't just call them and have them give you a guaranteed answer on how that's going to work. But those are the factors that go into what they're supposed to be picking up to monitor this, and to keep people from directing people that inadvertently. And by the things we're implementing here, these really are directly hitting, keeping cut-through traffic out. And non-cut-through traffic is a very, very manageable number, not going to be impactful number at all. It's simply not a significant impact, as we talked about thoroughly before. I think, if you ask me a question, I'll probably think five more that I didn't answer, so, but I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Vickers, and my thanks to your experts. Any questions or comments for the applicant or staff?
I actually have some questions, but I'm wondering if we could take a break?
Yes, pleased to take a break, if that would please the board. Let's plan to reconvene in five minutes at 5:10.
East Mineral Avenue and Centennial, 80112. I'm the deputy fire marshal of development and construction at South Metro Fire Rescue, so we've been involved in these conversations, as we are for all development referrals in our fire district. So the chronology of this has been, the original proposal was the through street, that we had no objection to, and responded to that referral in kind. And then we did see that request for the variance for a cul-de-sac that was over 1,500 foot in length. Douglas County's current roadway standards say 1,200-foot maximum cul-de-sac length. And cul-de-sacs, dead ends in general, do make our emergency apparatus access more difficult, the ability to only approach from one direction, especially when we're talking about fire apparatus, when hose lines start to spill off the sides, and we narrow down roads, having the ability to approach from another direction is always beneficial for us. We do know that there are cul-de-sacs within the village that are longer than that, but many of those have been around for quite some time before probably the level of involvement that we have today was in place. So we brought up the concerns, you know, this is a significant wildland urban interface zone, the topography, the vegetation, the prevailing winds, all create concerns where we could be needing to evacuate the village, and it's a very likely scenario to need to be evacuating it to the north. We have Gate 5 for that purpose. We also have a gate at the northwest that's an emergency gate, and so those become the place where we need to get everyone to, if we're having to evacuate to the north from a fire that's moving from south to north behind them. Our concern is that their southerly evacuation rates could potentially be impacted by fire and/or firefighting activities. And so that's where we got to, the concerns over the, one, the extended length of a cul-de-sac in general, beyond what the current county roadway standards are, and then that opened up the discussion to the possibility of emergency gates. Could the cul-de-sac be there? And then have still an emergency access only through connection to the existing Oxford Peak Lane via an emergency gate? We discussed that we were amenable to that. Then the conversation proceeded to, we had a meeting with the homeowners association specifically on that topic at their request. We discussed that as a potential option from our perspective. Then we had a meeting with the development team and discussed, they had some logistical challenges to that option. I believe that the development team spoke to the spaghetti of driveways and trying to converge too many things in too small of an area, et cetera. So we said, well, our primary concern remains that we have the ability with emergency apparatus to approach from both directions, if we're coming into the neighborhood to address an emergency, especially a wildland urban interface fire, and that, given Gate 5's location and proximity to the Country Club, and the volume of traffic we could see coming north very quickly, we presume overtaking the Gay Road and backing things up, that having this through road as a relief route seems like it would make good design sense. So those are all statements that we've made over the course of this review. So from the perspective of the fire department, I will say, a gate does present some challenges. We do have them throughout our district in various places for emergency access only. You know, occasionally, they may fail to operate it as a mechanical device that needs some maintenance. It can make things like snow removal more difficult, so it's not unusual that we see a gate and snow gets piled on both sides of it when we're doing snow removal, and then it's no longer available during those times. Things that can be overcome, for sure. And then they can just generally slow down response from a perspective of, depending on the type of gate that's put in, we may automatically have it open on our approach with equipment we have on our apparatus, in other cases, we have a key we have to use, we have to make sure it's opening and gets open for us to get through it. So it can cause a bit of a slowdown, but again, it seemed like a reasonable alternative, given the concerns that we were hearing from all interested parties. So a gate does present some challenges, they're not challenges that we, you know, that we feel we can't overcome, but, you know, we understood there were some additional logistical challenges in place here. So I think the through road without a gate, from strictly a fire department emergency apparatus response aspect, would be the best option. That is not to say that the presence of a gate would be, wouldn't be a good option or an option that we could still work with. So I'm happy to answer any questions, or try to provide some more specific feedback, but that's how we've arrived at where we are with response to our comments and our meetings and discussions on this proposed development.
I appreciate you sitting here for all this time and answering the question I had was about the gate and about the emergency response, and that if you need to get someplace fast without the gate, it's, it could be safer. So thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Further questions for either South Metro Fire or the applicant?
Questions for the applicant?
Please.
So when it comes to the signage, and we saw the stop signs presented, but then we also saw the not-a-thru-road signs, is that an authority you, the developer, have, or is that an authority that actually is with the Metro District?
This is Map Buster again. It would be the authority of the Metro District. The maps that we have shown you today, we have met with the Metro District and garnered their support of some of those items. The stop signs, the not-a-thru-road signs, they've said would only be used as a last-tier improvement. They are in full support of the speed limit reduction and the addition of the speed tables. But they said, you know, they would prefer to do those things first, and then warrant, if there are still problems, then begin to add on those additional tiers. But it does lie within the Castle Pines Metropolitan District's decision.
What about the monument that we saw coming off Country Club Road?
That does lie within our court, and we have agreed to install that. We will be installing that.
So you've agreed to install that. Are you willing to bind yourself to Condition 7 as a commitment?
Yeah, adding an additional condition.
Well, more specifically, if you're, excuse me, making the commitment, that is a commitment you've made, Condition 7, I would, I would ask, are you willing to bind that commitment here under Condition 7?
Yes, or even add an eighth that specifically states the monument sign, either one.
Yeah, I'm thinking specifically the monument sign, since that's where your authority lies. As opposed, however, I take it as a commitment that you're making here, that would be subject to Condition 7 here, in terms of working with the Metro District for the additional signage speed limit.
Yes.
Personally, I think the non-through-street one, you know, it's not a lie if you're reading it and trying to follow a GPS on a road you've never driven on.
Right.
You see that, and it's serious as a heart attack.
Yes, and, you know, traffic engineers, such as this gentleman to my left, you aren't in support of signs that do not tell the truth. But from a true, honest, someone who is not familiar with where they're going, and they think they want to turn, you know, south on Oxford Peak Lane, it is going to have a meaningful difference if that person does not know where they're going, such as we've seen in several of the photos. So that is why we suggest, you know, considering adding that sign. Currently, right now, however, both the traffic engineers and the Castle Pines Metro District want to leave that as a secondary option.
Okay, thanks.
You know, I have heard a lot, and again, I want to thank both the applicant and all of the citizens that have shown up here. I'm a fifth-generation Coloradan, and I know all three of my kids have grown up with people in this neighborhood and many other neighborhoods for many, many years. My awareness and understanding of this neighborhood is that it is a group of individuals that is deeply passionate about their way of life, about protecting safety, about ensuring that there is not damage and harm to the way that they operate on a daily basis. And I want to thank you for just taking time out of your day to be here with us. You've heard me, hopefully over four years, say this often, but I work for you, not the other way around. So you're the one who, you guys are paying all these taxes for this place and everything we do here, so I really respect your input. One of the key charges of the Board of Douglas County Commissioners is the health, safety, and welfare of 374,000 individuals. And so what is weighing most heavily on my mind is the input from South Metro Fire and the comments in the packet associated with safety. As the founder of the wildfire initiative, I'm deeply concerned about the potential risk to all of our citizens as it relates to wildfire, and I have zero interest in preventing current or future residents of this community from being able to leave and get to safety in the event of something catastrophic. So I guess, help me understand, I mean, I am a huge fan of resolving disputes and working well together with the community to identify a solution that makes sense, along with Commissioner Teal's line of reasoning. Is there a sensibility that a solution with the neighborhood that preserves their way of life but also protects public safety is possible, can be achieved, has been achieved? How would you respond to that?
That's, Jack Vickers again, I play record. That's literally what we've been doing for the last 18 months. We've been, you know, I think those, you know, there's many people with many suggestions, but what everyone needs to understand, and I know you well understand, is that, you know, a suggestion, oh, just add this road over here, or just move that, I mean, there's just an absolute ripple effect through everything they have to rethink through. So it isn't as simple as, oh, just throw in this road connection here and put in a breakaway gate. You know, there's repercussions, a breakaway gate's a compromise to begin with on, from pure safety, welfare, in wildfire, evacuation, those kind of things. It's a way of saying, well, we'll still give the fire district in an emergency a way that they can work with it and maybe make it work, but emergencies, you know, you don't get three days' notice when your next emergency's going to come. You know, you have to think on the spot, and you have to be able to, you know, residents need to know where their outlets are, you know, where the evacuation routes are. Breakaway gates are not ideal. We've already put one only, you know, 100 yards from here, you know, already cutting off that other part of the development, which again, from a safe, healthy, and welfare and emergency evacuation is not great. To compound it to just prevent 10 more homes, so that there's no homes, you know, coming on an extended Oxford Peak Lane, just doesn't make sense, because this road is more, if you were to look back on the map, you know, where the two Oxford, where our Oxford Peak hits the existing Oxford Peak, if you do west, that's where the Country Club's coming out on the Country Club Parkway, Country Club Drive. And so, you know, that... And so, you know, that, that's an area where everything's south of that point, that, that's just a more delicate place to contemplate yet another breakaway gate. And, you know, the HOA's said, well, you know, maybe we take out the old one. Well, we just went through great trouble on plating of these other, you know, 69 units have been platted. A lot of work on the construction plans, and the construction, as we speak, is probably going to be done in a couple of weeks. I mean, it's virtually all done. You know, it's all committed to under contract with the contractor, and then just say, oh, now we'll just move it up there. But there's, there's just a lot more to consider to move it like that. I just feel like we've done everything, and I've come back really to a stronger point that the Fire District really made me, you know, they didn't say this to me, but it, it just got me thinking more about an emergency, particularly that of a wildfire, and particularly that, which Rich said, was in my meeting, was that their assessment of a probability, if you have a wildfire in this area, that you're going to want to get 90% of the traffic going north. And if, you know, if that's the case, you know, you're just, you're just playing with, pardon the pun, but you're playing with fire here to just keep putting more, you know, yet another gate. It just doesn't make sense. And we've already, with the existing gate, which is in place, it's been paid for, you've already solved 90% of the very issue that the residents had about these 100 units coming through their community.
Thank you, Mr. Vickers. You know, let me direct a line of questioning to our staff. We heard a little bit about the traffic report from the applicant's engineer. Are you able to confirm that, that traffic study and the accuracy of it, Brett? Who do we have for him?
Afternoon, Commissioners. Al Peterson for Engineering Staff. Yes, I want to make the point that the 1985 study is still valid. That was approved quite a while ago, but those volumes are correct. So anything that comes in after that that shows less volume is still acceptable, which is why we still use that study. Does that answer your question?
I think it does. I don't know if you're able to speak to any issues associated with ingress and egress, and whether or not that throughway actually reduces. I think one of the comments made was that that would reduce traffic going through that area because it creates different avenues for people to exit.
That's correct.
Okay.
I concur with Mr. Granahan's assessment when he went through that.
He didn't, okay. Mr. Peterson, thank you.
Can I ask?
Yes, please go ahead.
Mr. Peterson? I just want to clarify something I heard you say. You said that when the volumes are lower than what this study said, then the study is still accurate. So how do you know the volumes are lower?
Well, it's cumulative as it goes along. So we still get assessments that come in every time. So now I have another 94 that add into what the original volumes were. So until we exceed that capacity, which was stated in the original 85 study, then we know that we're still under that.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? Okay, I don't think I have any further questions. I'll bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
Well, I'll get going. I'll, I'll go ahead and echo some what we heard from the chair in terms of, all you residents who came out, thank you for coming out. I mean, the reality is, we're only as good as, our community is only as good as the participation we all bring to it. And the reality is, every one of you who spoke, obviously, you were very impassioned about feeling like there was something that could go wrong here if this were to allow to, to move forward. And so the fact that you didn't, did more than just send an email, you did more than complain to your neighbor, but you actually came before us today, actually, that garners a lot of my respect. And so I very much appreciate it because this is still America, this is still how things work. With that said, I'll tell you what, side friction is real, and actually, I found those photos to be breathtaking. I have seen neighborhoods in Castle Rock take extreme measures in order to prevent any sort of parking on a road like that. And so I give you guys credit that you feel like that's a part of your neighborhood, that's what you see every day, that's what you're used to, and that's the way you choose to live. I give you credit for giving yourselves that level of freedom. But, boy, that's going to be a real challenge to get anybody down that road who is not used to that at any rate of speed probably that you travel every day. And then, in my opinion, having been doing this for a while, that left hand turned out of Gate 5, that makes most of what's been said here unneeded, quite frankly. With that said, if it pleases the board, I have a motion to approve Castle Pines Village filing number 44A, First Amendment, minor development plat, because it does meet all of the approval criteria with seven conditions as presented, project file SB 2021-053.
I'll second that, and I would like to make comments before I vote.
Please.
So I agree. I appreciate, appreciate all of you coming here. Like Commissioner Teal said, not only did you just not complain over the fence to your neighbors, somebody actually took the time to do this petition and go door-to-door. And having gone door-to-door for years, I know how hard it is, it takes a lot of effort. So thank you for whoever organized and did this. So the notes that I wrote down, the first ones, you know, what we heard Mr. Larson say is, we need another solution. And I listened through all this presentation, and what I heard is that the developer had worked, or the applicant had worked through different solutions for 18 months. They looked at something, they talked about joining a hammerhead, and they talked about making a cul-de-sac. And after I read all this last night and looked at all the maps and listened today, I don't know what other solutions they could come up with. We heard about an emergency gate. And I'm going to ask the county attorney, I know that there is a state statute that prohibits blocking a roadway, but these are private roads, so that statute does not apply to these roads. Is that correct?
You are correct, Commissioner. There are limitations on what a county can do with a public road. Those limitations statutorily, or you can close a road, which we interpret as gate as well, for up to 90 days in a calendar year and limited to the purpose of maintenance only. So otherwise, roads must be open to the traveling public. That's how the county interprets it for public roads. That standard does not apply to privately owned roads.
Thank you. One person made a comment that if there was an accident, it would have disastrous consequences. And as I've thought about this and listened to everyone, if there were an accident on Country Club Drive, that would have consequences to the neighborhood that would find it important to have another way, which according to what I've been seeing would be Oxford Peak. You know, we just listened to a presentation by Mayor Stoltzman from Louisville, and she showed us videos that were taken when that Marshall fire started. And she talked about how quickly and important it was that people would be able to get out. And this county is the only one we know of that funds a helicopter to sit at 85 and Titan Road, not far from where you live, to be able to respond immediately and, and start hitting a fire hard, heavy, and fast. And we just approved six additional personnel to work on that fired crew. Because we realize after the Marshall fire that, that fire in our communities is, is a real possibility. So as I listened, I believe it was, the gentleman was named Chris, who talked about moving traffic through that part of the village and actually relieving some of the traffic, I don't remember the name of the road, but if, if Oxford Peak is joined all the way, it would actually relieve traffic on other roads in the village. And I agree with what Commissioner Teal said, that after, if someone accidentally gets on Oxford Peak after it is built out and has to navigate what the picture showed, they're not going to make that mistake again. And they're going to take the road, which will get them more quickly to where they need to go. So we listened to you, I have, I have listened to everyone here, and this is a difficult decision, but I feel that my vote in support of this application will be the correct one. Thank you.
You know, I want to make sure that procedurally we're doing this correctly, and I believe staff indicated that we needed to get a motion on 3B approved and then 3C. So am I correct in understanding we probably need to go back to 3B?
That is correct. SIAIGA, which is 3B, would have to be approved first.
Okay. Then I will accept a motion on 3B.
I have a chair to approve, I'm sorry, I have a motion to approve subdivision improvements agreement, intergovernmental agreement between the BAC Ts at Castle Pines Village LLC, whose address is 975 North Lincoln Street, Unit 204, Denver, Colorado 80203, and the Castle Pines Metropolitan District, whose address is 5880 Country Club Drive, Castle Rock, Colorado 80108, and the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners, project filed DV 2021 dash zero, I'm sorry, DV 2021 dash 360.
Second.
Thank you for that. So we have a first and second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion is approved. I'll return to motion 3C. Do we need a new motion, Lance, or can I just return to the original motion by Commissioner Teal?
You can return to the original motion so long as you believe it's clear.
Okay, I think it's clear on the record. There was, I believe, a first and second on 3C. Is there any further discussion? I think both Commissioners, my colleagues have both made some comments about this issue. I will also echo my sentiments. And I can't in good conscience approve of any modifications that would impair public safety, put people at risk as a result of wildfires, and potentially harm those that may be coming to this neighborhood. But that said, I am deeply respectful of those that took the time to be with us, collect signatures, and for the incredible character that you present regarding your community. You should be very proud of yourselves and your neighbors. But with that, I will be approving that. We have a first and second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Our final item for today, and I want to thank Kim Hirsch, if she's, oh, there's Martha. Thanks for hanging out with us. Okay. Good day to be under the weather. But item D is a resolution supplementing the 2022 adopted budget to appropriate unanticipated revenues and appropriate restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned fund balances in the amount of $18,958,000, $58,829. Martha Marshall from staff.
So, good afternoon, Commissioners. Martha Marshall for Budget Staff. I am here this afternoon with a resolution amending the 2022 adopted budget to increase appropriations for new revenues not anticipated in the adopted budget and appropriate unspent balances carried forward from the prior fiscal year. Colorado revised statute 29-1-109 provides the ability for local governments to amend the budget throughout the year as necessary. This total supplemental will amend the adopted budget by $18,958,829, bringing the new amended 2022 budget to $540,331,761. Your packet has complete details with everything that is being amended. You've been sitting here a long time this afternoon. I would be happy to go ahead and answer any questions and just forego kind of the presentation where I go and hit the highlights for each fund if that meets your needs.
What would please the board? Does the board have any questions or directions for Martha Marshall?
I just have one question. Martha, I had written down that this would bring the budget to 511. You just said 540.
Right. The adopted budget is 511. So we've gone ahead and had two supplementals, including this one, for a total of $28,625,799. So that is added to the 511, which is the adopted.
I misread that. So what is our budget, what is our, if we approve this, what is our approved budget?
It would be $540,331,761.
Thank you. That was my error. Thank you for correcting me, Martha.
No problem.
Further questions for staff?
No, I was satisfied with the packet review.
I was as well, Martha. I have no further questions. Are there additional questions?
I was going to make a motion.
Okay, I think we might need citizen comment on this.
I apologize.
It's okay. I don't assume that there's any citizen comment, but I will ask if there's any citizen comment on this item, either in person or online.
I have no online comment.
Okay, and with that, I will close citizen comment.
I have a motion to approve a resolution supplementing the 2022 adopted budget to appropriate unanticipated revenues and appropriate restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned fund balances in the amount of $18,958,829.
Second.
I have a first and second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that carries 3-0. Thank you, Martha.
Thank you.
And with that, I will adjourn our land use and public hearing. Thank you very much.